Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience tonight. We had two urgencies items added to our agenda for a closed session. And because of that, it took us a little bit of time to get through those.
Yes, sir.
I will call the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council. The City Council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for September 3rd, 2019. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Present.
Councilmember Griffith?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tempey?
Present.
Mayor Mattis?
Present.
Is there anybody from the Ministerial Fellowship or anyone would like to give the invocations tonight? No one coming forth. We'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'll start off this with our newest council member leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Griffith, please rise.
Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to our city attorneys, report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have one item, one reportable action. It was on an urgency item with respect to the matter of Garcia versus City of Desert Hot Springs, case number PSC-1807458. The City Council voted for one with Councilmember Betts voting no to settle the lawsuit. The petitioners, the three petitioners are Dean Garcia, James Maror, and Helen O'Neil Pottery. And the other party is, of course, the City of Desert Hot Springs. Basically, the settlement settles the matter, requires the city to adopt a housing element and perform various issues with respect to the housing element and the zoning code updates with respect to compliance with state law. And eventually, which was another portion of the settlement agreement, our fees and the attorney's fees will be brought back at a later time. But in essence, the matter has in fact been settled, and I have the document in front of me. That's all for the reportable action for this evening.
Move on to the approval. Mr. Mayor, quickly, there was one item on the agenda that I needed to recuse for. So in case everybody's wondering why I'm sitting here and they're all back there, is there was an agenda item that they couldn't participate in due to what's known as a proximity conflict, meaning I had financial business interest that was too close to the other interests that was being talked about, so I had to recuse. Next item is approval of the agenda. At this time, we'll approve the agenda as is, adding anything that anybody would like, and the consent calendar. Is there anybody would like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I would like to pull something from the consent calendar. Number 13, City Council's special meeting minutes.
Is it just a correction?
Yes.
Could you make that now?
Yes. I voted for Kathleen Barber and Walt Meyer in the vote.
You have that correction noted?
Yes, still noted, thank you.
That's it.
Any other items pulled from the consent calendar? Would anybody like to speak on any items of the consent calendar? From the consent calendar, Don? That's not the consent calendar. Yeah. With that, we'll entertain a motion.
I need to abstain from a portion of the consent calendar.
Which portion?
Which would be the special, City Council's special meeting.
Item number 13. That all noted? Clerks?
Yes.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion.
It's been made.
Second.
And you'll second that, Mr. Betts. Thank you very much. Please vote if there's no more discussion.
Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda is approved and the consent calendar is approved. At this time, we'll go to public comments. At this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. That means if you're here for an agenda item, you'll need to wait till that agenda item comes forth, and you do not need to fill out any blue cards. You'll be called forth for public comment. You'll state your name and your three minutes will begin. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. We do have quite a few. If you're here for the first time, there's blue cards in the back that can be handed into the city clerk, and they look like this, and that would get you on the consent, on the public comments. Public comments will be open until the last speaker. Our first speaker is Eddie Johnson, followed by Bill Hawkins.
This working now? Yep. My name is Eddie Johnson. Everybody knows him. I'm a military veteran of the Order of Purple Heart, was wounded in Vietnam. And I'm going to address mine to the mayor, City Council members, city officials, and residents of Desert Hot Springs. It's been brought to my attention several different times that Veterans Day was changed by a couple of members in the CCAC group to move it to November 10th, and I choose that we move it back to November 11th because we can do events here in Desert Hot Springs that only last 30 minutes from 9:00 to 9:30, still make the VFW, I can make the parade and go lead healing fields afterwards. But a lot of those veterans are disagreeing with the idea to change November 11th. Veterans Day was always set up for, I mean, 1919 of being Veterans Day, November 11th, not to be moved to November 10th to do our ceremony service at Veterans Park. So I disagree with that movement, and I hope that the City Council will see the veterans like myself and move it back to 11th so we can have our service then. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eddie. Mr. Bill Hawkins, followed by Frank Gillette.
Meeting Mayor, City Council, City officials, members of Desert Hot Springs. My name is Bill Hawkins. I'm a resident of Desert Hot Springs. And it was brought to my attention also that they was going to move Veterans Day to the 10th. And to those who have never experienced separation from your family for six months to a year, you can never know what we veterans and their families go through. This is a federal holiday, should not be canceled and rescheduled because in 1919, President Wilson proclaimed November 11th as Armistice Day, which is now Veterans Day, for those who died in the country's service. And now for the City of Desert Hot Springs to disrespect this day is ludicrous for an event that has been nothing to do with Veterans Day. I'm a 27-year veteran and find this very insulting to me and those who served this country and other DHS veterans. And I would really like, I would really be disappointed if this did not happen on the appointed day. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you for your comments. Frank?
My name is Frank Gillette, and I've lived here in Desert Hot Springs since 2005. I'm a 27-year retiree from the US Navy and was in Vietnam. My concern is why are we moving the celebration, which most veterans look at it as being sacred Veterans Day? Why change it to a different day or time? This is just so deeply ingrained in a veteran, how important that day is. And I just hope that feeling gets passed along to the appropriate people so they could rethink moving the celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Don Schulte, followed by Patrick. Patrick, I can't read your last name. Patrick? Patrick, what's your last name?
Opard.
Opard? Okay. Patrick, you'll follow Don.
Good evening, council, and Mayor Mattis, and staff members. Gosh, it's been about, I've been here 12 and a half years, and about 11 to 11 and a half years ago, I had the fortunate, I was fortunate enough to be on the Streets Committee with Camille, and it was headed by Russell Betts. And I took 95%, pictures of 95% of all the streets in the city. We judged them, we calculated on what needed what when, and we came up with charts and scales, and our cost was nothing. When I saw the engineers' reports that basically cost, I don't know, $100,000, we could almost have charged them for plagiarism because it looked exactly like what we came up with. And I talked to the company as they were putting the streets in, and they said, "In order to save the quality of your streets," and we were known for the worst streets in the West Valley, they said, "You need to slurry seal it every five years at the most, at the most seven years." Now, from what I understand out here, they just put a coat of black stuff, tar maybe, I don't know what it is. The city I was in before, when they slurry sealed, there was like a carpet that went down first. It was a fiber. And then they came back and paved over it, and it would last another seven years, very nicely. And I live over on Quondo, it's this nice wide street, and every parcel has at least a 3/8 to a half inch crack going from the curb to the center of the street. We are gradually slipping down the hill, the streets. So, I mean, I don't know how much money the city is getting from taxes on businesses, but I think for you to neglect the streets of this city that the redevelopment agency helped us rebuild and make this a nice looking town, whether or not we had sidewalks, I mean Manhattan Beach, a very expensive community, only half the city has sidewalks. So I think you should put your money where your mouth was 10 years ago, and you just look, the work that went into it, and repair our streets before they look like what they used to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don. Patrick Opard, followed by Mark. Is it Nazaco?
Dolazco.
Dolazco?
My name is Patrick Opard. I'm Korean War veteran, and I was there in the early 50s, and I seen a lot of things and I heard a lot of things when I was there. And one thing I did remember was how to say yes in Chinese, and that she, she, that's how you say yes in Chinese. I seen a lot of Chinese there, and I seen a lot of people, different people there. And I came back here to California, and I said, "Wow, look at here. This is just like Korea. Every nation in the world is here." So that was like coming home to me. I'm from Wisconsin, really, where it gets cold. So that was my reason for being in California, was it's nice and warm here. You got good weather here. And this was 66 years ago that I came here. And I'm so happy to be here and learn about the process. You see, and when I was in the Army, we didn't have no process. We just, we just got orders, is all we got. So I'm happy to be here and see the City Council. I want to say to you that you guys are doing a magnificent job, City Council, yeah. So I'm impressed, and I'm really impressed. Thank you for giving me a chance to say that, to speak to you, and I hope to see you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, followed by Pamela Berry.
Hi, guys. God bless you. My name is Mark Dolazco. I'm a veteran myself, 14 and a half years there served. They gave me this chance here to come talk to everybody here, and I'm sure that this is going to be one of a bunch of meetings we're going to have. I'm a future pastor of your district, of this city, of this town, and I'm doing everything I can right now as a veteran, in Veteran Services with our home that has four vets right now, two civilians, but looking forward to every time, every chance I get to talk with one of us, to let it be known, yes, we are proud to serve you, and we're not done yet. We're coming to one more challenge. The opposition was to have our day. We have our day right here, we have a day with you, we have our chance to show them we're not stopping because somebody else says we want it on this day or that day. We're going to celebrate it regardless. We would just like you to come along with us because you weren't there when we bled or died, but we're here to continue to serve you, either still bleeding or still dying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I'm going to, hold on Pamela, I'm going to have Judy come up. It sounds like there's a little trend going on here, and then Pamela, you'll be after Judy.
Good evening, all. Well, yes, there is a little trend. I have a number of things that I want to talk about. Okay, well, actually Keith Hightower just helped me get rid of one thing. He gave me an update on what's going on at Fifth and, at the Chase Building, which the Adventist is going to lease to AA, maybe for five years at a very economical cost. Anyway, so, thank you, Keith. Appreciate your information. Okay, we have another thing going on. We don't want the bus to go down Long Canyon anymore. We want it to go down Mountain View where there's people, there's a church, there's businesses, there's a, you know, I mean, there's nobody and there are no stops on Long Canyon from Hacienda to Dillon, okay? Nothing. They're not making a dime. So we really, I, we have a meeting on 7/18 at 6 o'clock right here with Russell, and hopefully anybody else will come and join us and help us to get Sunline to move this bus where it makes sense. It'll come past Desert Cove, anyway, you know, Mountain View. If you don't, go down it and go down the other one, Long Canyon, you'll see nothing. Okay, the other thing is, yes, my husband died when he was 43 from his injury from Vietnam. He stepped on a landmine. He came back from Vietnam with the most decorated soldier with less than six months and 125% disability. My brother died of Agent Orange up the street, okay? He had two tours of Vietnam, of course, you have, thank you for putting his picture up there, and something from the President of the United States. My cousin Jimmy, he passed away, Jimmy Shea, from his injuries and from Agent Orange. My Auntie Helen, well, she was 94, but she was a veteran. She was a little bitty veteran. She had, she was in World War II. I have a picture of her in the Veteran Center, holding me in her sergeant uniform. My little auntie was a sergeant in World War II. That's amazing. But anyway, she's holding me in that picture. It's amazing. But, you know, I, we cherish the Veterans Day. I mean, it's like gold to us, and we celebrate it, you know, and, you know, it's kind of like, why are we going to have it a day before? Doesn't make any sense. I did ask the Marines, my grandson-in-law, he's just re-upped for the fourth time, and he, I asked him to ask his buddies what they, they think of this, and they said, "Why?" You know? And I'm going to the Marine Corps Ball up in Vegas to babysit my great-grandbaby, number 11, and, you know, they think it's absurd that it would be the 10th instead of the 11th. And I'm hoping that, you know, we'll have it on, it wasn't that long the last time we had one. I was there, I've been there at almost every one. Thank you for letting me share.
Thanks, Judy. Pamela Berry, followed by Cliff. I'm assuming it's Cliff Levy? Nope, there it is. Sorry, it wasn't on the card.
Good evening, council, staff, citizens. Pamela Berry, citizen of Desert Hot Springs. I'm here tonight also in support of veterans having their ceremony on Veterans Day. It is not anything new that the VFW has their event that morning, and there's a parade in Palm Springs. This has been going on for years. When I was on the CCAC, we started our event at 9:00 AM. The VFW was 10, and you had plenty of time to get down south part of the valley for the other events. I am astounded that two people on a veteran committee, two, and then five with the CCAC has made this decision without the council having the final say. I certainly hope we can have our Veterans Day on Veterans Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Levy? Cliff is the last speaker before I get into a quick city staff that want to make some comments. Is there anybody else that would like to make public comments not on the agenda tonight? This is the second and final call.
No personal attacks, huh?
No personal attacks.
How about a personal compliment? I got a call from a friend of mine that I've had for 40 years, grew up with in the Midwest, in Ohio. He now lives in Cathedral City, and he called me about a month and a half ago, as I said, and he'd been to a meeting where each city in the valley had been represented, and he was in awe of the representative that was at that meeting. And I want to thank Gary for representing our city in that fashion that a friend of mine that long would call me and be that impressed. He gave the best presentation of any of the other cities there. So Gary, thank you, and I'm glad I voted for you.
All right. No other public comments, so we're going to lead, lead, we're going to lead. So the lead team from Desert Hot Springs is going to be led by Lynn Paul, and they're going to come up and talk about a, a program that they're going to be having here? An event? There we go. You're not Lynn.
She's going to talk.
No, I'm joking. Go ahead. Can you guys all state your names so everybody knows who you are?
Hi. I'm Lynn Paul. I'm the leader of the lead team, and I work in the Public Works Department.
I'm Colleen Michael, permit technician in the Building Department.
I'm Angelica Villalobos, Finance Department.
Patricia Villagomez, Planning Department.
Melissa Purcell, City Managers Department.
Good evening, City Council, staff, and members of the public. My name is Patricia Villagomez, and I am a member of the newly formed LEAD Team, which stands for Leadership, Education, Action, and Development. LEAD is intended to encourage cooperation and efficiency between employees and city departments. We are learning how each department functions both independently and cohesively about leadership, public service, and community involvement. This team community project is a community night in the park, meet your city. It will take place on Saturday, September 28th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Warman Park, located at 657508 Street. City departments, elected officials, and commissions will be available to meet the residents and respond to any comments and questions. There will also be tables for vendors that provide services to the residents, such as Desert Valley Disposal, Mission Springs Water District, Sunline, Palm Springs Unified District, and many more.
It won't be all business. There are fun zones at each city table. We'll have a petting zoo in the dog park, a water slide for the kids, face painting, sack races, pie eating contests, a photo booth, fire trucks, police cars, and let's not forget a dunk tank. Take your shot at plunging a city council member.
Thanks, Melissa.
There will also be free popcorn, cotton candy, snow cones, and more. There will be food available for purchase as well. Hamburgers, hot dogs, tacos, burritos, funnel cakes, churros, and more. Last but not least, we will be having a raffle for many prizes, with the grand prize being a 65-inch television. All proceeds will benefit the Wall of Honor, which will be located at the Veterans Memorial Park. There is still more, I'm sorry, there's still time to become a silver, gold, or platinum sponsor or donate raffle prizes. There are flyers in the back of the room with contact information, so join us. We hope to see you all there.
Was that it?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
There might be some questions by the City Council. So the meeting I heard started off with, "Let's have a dunk tank, put the city council in it," right? I'm just joking. So Russell Betts will be starting the dunk tank, right?
No, I don't.
Oh! I have volunteered, and I think Gary volunteered, so you have at least two council members to dunk.
I have some backups, just.
Okay, good. Chuck Maynard?
Uh...
I'm joking. Thank you for everything you guys are doing. It sounds like a wonderful community event that we'll have. Please come out as they've asked you to, so.
Thank you.
All right. With that said, no more public comments. We're going to move on to City Managers' report. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I have the last several meetings, I'm going to ask Danny Porres to give an update on the ATP Grant project on Palm Drive. And I'd also like Danny to talk a little bit about the current progress on the new City Hall.
Thank you. We actually have a few projects going on on Palm Drive. I'll start off near the I-10. We have the Entryway Phase 2 project, which is currently in construction. It's updating, upgrading the center median and extending the curb about 165 feet north. We removed some of the landscaping. We're replacing with new drought-tolerant Desert Scape and brand-new date palms and some nice uplights that connect with the rest of the lights. We also will be having shoulder maintenance along Palm Drive, maintaining some of those shoulders, regrading and removing some of those weeds. And we also have the ATP Palm Drive Sidewalk and Streetlight Project that's going on on Palm Drive currently on the east side of Palm Drive. The west side has been almost about 80% complete. There's been sidewalk installed, all the conduit for streetlights is in place, and now we have moved over to the east side where new sidewalk will be installed, new conduits for streetlights, and soon enough, we'll have brand-new streetlights. It's going to be a total of 35 streetlights on that segment. There's also one more project that's out to bid. It's a traffic signal project that's going to be installing brand-new traffic signals on Palm and Desert View and on Pearson and Choya, and that one, the construction bids are due next Monday. So the next council meeting, we will hopefully bring it back for award. And the last project we have is the new City Hall project. New City Hall project is currently on schedule. We completed the pouring of the concrete slab, all the underground utilities have been in place, and we have gone vertical with the walls and currently are constructing all these structural elements. So if you actually drive down Palm Drive and Pearson, you'll see the building going up vertical. Everything is on schedule, and we're running perfectly on time. Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. City Manager? Mr. City Manager, anybody else? Was that it?
That's it. Thank you, sir.
All right. Moving to Mayor and Councilmember comments. Who would like to go first tonight? Mr. Gardner in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be back after, after our vacation of sorts. Cliff, thank you. Oh, he's left, so that was very kind of you, Cliff. I really am flattered by that. I'll start off with one thing that just came to light this last week. I serve as the city's representative on the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District Board, and the district has detected some invasive 80s mosquitoes in DHS for the first time since those little butters were detected in the valley in 2016. And this type of mosquito most often is found in containers of water in people's yards. Because they like to bite people almost exclusively, they live close to houses and in yards. They've been detected in the northeast part of the city near Mission Lakes and Verbena primarily, and Vector Control will be out conducting additional surveillance in the area and some door-to-door inspections, searching for standing water and treating them with insecticide. They're asking everybody up in that area to be diligent in removing sources of standing water, old tires, fountains, even your sprinkling system if it leaves a puddle for more than a day. If you live in the affected areas, you will have or soon will be contacted by Vector Control, and if you find mosquitoes, please don't hesitate to call Vector Control, 7603428287, and you can get that number at City Hall as well. Wear repellent, save yourself from getting bit, especially in the early morning or early evening hours. Spoke at the Riverside County Builders Association lunch, talking about our vision for developers here in Desert Hot Springs and the improvements coming to the city building department with the new City Hall and our new staffing and arrangements there. And I've got a lot of really good feedback from potential developers who are looking for projects out here in this part of the valley, particularly around developing and redeveloping our spa properties, and I'll be working with Councilmember Griffiths on a couple of those projects. Had a chance to stop by the Cooling Center a couple of times in August. Very, very, very pleased with the work of the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, what they've done and how well it's running this summer, and we've even had capacity there a couple of nights on some of the more warm evenings. So great job to all those involved, and to Councilmember Py for leading the efforts with the homeless community. Also pleased, Danny, with the work on Palm Drive, the sidewalks in the new entryway, so kudos to our public work staff for their work on this, and I'll be excited to see as that moves forward down, down Palm. And finally, one quick announcement coming up, a ways down in October, October 24th, that's a Thursday, we'll be having the first Town Hall with the LGBTQ community and our police... And finally, one quick announcement coming up, a ways down in October, October twenty-fourth, that's a Thursday, we'll be having the first town hall with the LGBTQ community and our police chief. It'll be 6:00 PM here in the Carl May Center. It's open to everybody, but the focus will be on concerns and suggestions that the LGBTQ community has with the community relationship with the police department and policing in our city. We'll announce it further coming up again, but put it on your calendar now, October twenty-fourth. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Betts?
Thanks. It's good to be back after a long break. I, I'll get through this as quick as I can. It's been almost two months since we were away, right? As mentioned, we have the Coachella Valley Rescue Mission is operating an overnight homeless Cooling Center, and we're very, very lucky to have Coachella Valley Rescue Mission there. We also have some very good citizens in our community who have stepped up to make some contributions. The county came through with money, Desert Healthcare District came with money, but they've been in need of some things. Mission Springs Resort and Spa made a donation of a lot of foodstuffs, basically snacks, so when people show up, they aren't going to bed hungry, they've got a snack. And then we had Renova Energy, founder Vincent Batalla presented some solar chargers, Eddie Johnson delivered some toiletries several times, Carl Baker delivered some clothes, our police department has delivered clothes, fellow councilmember Gary Gardner has delivered clothes. And I'm, see if I got this right, Jen, welcome to the community, fantastic cleaning. They offered some services down there as well? Okay, so anyhow, they were very appreciative. I, when I stopped down there to take the donation from Mission Springs Resort and Spa, I mean, it filled my car, but anyhow, I stopped down there and I noticed that the porta-potties were a little bit, well, as Gary mentioned, the place has been at capacity, and so were the porta-potties, and they were stinking, so it turns out that Coachella Valley Rescue Mission had been contracting out for one day a week. We managed to get ahold of Burtec, and so there's your final contribution making a big difference. They've agreed at no cost to pump and keep those things cleaned out twice a week instead of once a week. Anyhow, that's a big deal down there. If you were down there and smelled it, it was a big deal. All right. Oh, boy, there's so many meetings, it's really busy. I was supposed to be on vacation, it wasn't busy, but Airport Land Use Commission, attended the Mission Springs Water District, they have an item on the agenda that I caught my attention, was requesting consent of the city at Desert Hot Springs to form an assessment District eighteen within their, within the city, which is basically more sewers coming to the city, if I have that correct, Russ Martin? And so we got more sewers coming into the city. They've done a good job on bringing these sewers in. Anywhere else where it would cost twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, I think they're bringing them in for four, five thousand when you have to get hooked up, so kudos to them. It was interesting to sit through their meeting. Attended the Southern California Association of Governments RENA Subcommittee Meeting, another one that's going on. It's a lot of that in the news. Mostly about, well, everybody's heard about the housing crisis in Southern Calif, in California, and this is basically setting numbers of how many housing units are gonna be built in the state by state mandate, and each city gets their share. And there's some people thinking, well, the higher the RENA number, the better, but believe me, the numbers coming out of the state are so high that it would be impossible for anybody to meet that challenge, so anyhow, we'll, we'll have more on that. Attended Sunline Transit Agency, there's some route changes coming up. We had some of our residents attend a meeting down there, as Judy Shea mentioned. They came up with an idea that Route fifteen should go down Mountain View instead of Long Canyon, as soon as that suggestion was on with the bus service. A lot of people rely on it, and so that'll be here, there'll be some light refreshments, and that's at 6:00 PM, and there'll be stuff out on social media and flyers. What else? I met with the city manager, met with Kathleen Kelly at Palm Desert to discuss issues relative to RENA. Everything is RENA these days. We have a factory, a new factory in town, you know, we've got all kinds of new factories in town. There's one, surprisingly, that's held up over state documents, they're ready to go. You've seen it down there on Little Morongo Medmen, and they're just waiting to turn the key and open the door in the place, and incredibly, they're just waiting on state paperwork. So what, a hundred people, a hundred jobs, ready to go, and only in California would paperwork be holding up a factory that's ready to go. So everybody, the city staff, city councils, pressing that one as hard as we can, and trying to get that piece of paper in place, so that a hundred people in our city, a hundred more people in our city can go to work. Attended the neighborhood meeting over Tuscan Hills. I attended the Southern California Association of Governments Community and Economic Development Committee Meeting. I'm now off, I'm off of transportation, but now on C H D up at SCAG, so changed but good, familiar territory. Had a situation come up with a motel in town, and the, it was dilapidated, and it'd been that way for ten years, and the neighbors had finally just had enough, and I think, I imagine that somebody after driving past it one day said, that's it, I can't take it anymore, got on the computer and started blasting everybody up here, you know, these incompetent people can't even deal with this property, it's been here this long and needs to get fixed, and I understand that frustration. Sometimes the legal process is just such that it's very difficult to get some of this stuff done. Anyhow, I, I didn't want all us getting beat up, so I reached out to the, found the owner and said, will you at least take care of this landscaping? So she coughed up twelve hundred dollars, found a local guy to do the landscaping, and we at least got it looking better. The neighbors were going by with a big thumbs up, saying, well, that's great, it looks much better. I look at it, I still say, it looks like a racket's boarded up, it needs to be fixed, but you know, hey, if I got them off the back, you guys can all pat me on the back later, you all been saved, they're not coming here with pitchforks, but we really need to do something to try and figure out this process, is the point of all this, is we got a building that's sitting there for ten years, looking like an eyesore in the community, and somehow we have to figure out how we get this done quicker. If the legal process is such that a judge is gonna say, no, it has to stay that way, then we gotta start seeking other solutions. I'd like this council to put that on a future agenda item, see if we can do something about Skip over some of this. Attended the cabinet chamber ribbon cutting. Some of the issues I dealt with, there's so many scams out there now with people getting cheated, mostly the elderly. If somebody's calling you to offer you money, say you won something, or anything like that, just tell them no, nobody's calling to give you money. Somebody I know real personally, Mom, has had her welfare checks diverted twice to another bank account, and it's amazing how easy it is to go divert somebody's welfare checks. Of course, it doesn't help when somebody gives out all their personal information. I know she's watching, Mom, would you stop doing that, please? So she's had her welfare check diverted twice. We went and switched it back to the bank account for the deposit, and we just found out now, again, it's been diverted, it's that easy. But also, there's somebody else who told me they had the same problem, somebody else donated, got called and said, go down and get one of these online cards, and they gave up fifteen hundred dollars thinking they won a prize, and they didn't. And then we even had somebody come into the police station, I learned, saying, why are you gonna arrest me? The IRS says you're gonna arrest me, I'm here, who's gonna arrest me? And, you know, there's people losing a lot of money on this stuff, and so I don't, I'm tracking this stuff. I tracked one guy down to where they were, and, you know, tried to put the fear of God in him, I don't know if it worked, or had an actual address, but you just think about the resources it would take for our city to track these down, and then for the corresponding cities to try and do the same thing, and it's a huge problem. I don't know what we need to do. I wish there was unlimited funds that we could put in some type of unit to just go after these people. Anyhow, so don't, Mom, stop giving them the information and stop falling for that stuff. Had a resident that was upset about junk that was showing, that was in front of an apartment building on Mesquite, I think it was a headboard and a mattress or something like that, and it'd been there for a few weeks, which brings up another issue the council needs to take up, is we go and we pick up this junk, if it's not in front of apartments, in front of houses and vacant lots, but if it's in front of an apartment, we don't pick it up, we instead go through the code process notifying the owner to try and remove this stuff. And what happens is it ends up sitting there for a couple of weeks, and then you get calls by people, say, you know, guys, can't you guys do anything? We've got this mattress sitting here for two weeks, get rid of it. Anyhow, I called DVD and I get rid of that, but the problem is, is we have to sort out something where these apartment owners, there's so much volume of stuff in the apartments, the decision has been, let's not do anything about this. I mean, it was too overwhelming of the system. We already spent a lot of money on the system to go through and clear all this stuff out. So that might be something else, Mr. Mayor, we wanna approach as a way we can get that done, or get some type of proposal from staff. DVD's been doing this for, what, three years now? They certainly gotta know which apartments are putting out so much stuff and which aren't. Then I was asked a question by a resident today, what about the alleyways behind their house? Who's responsible for those? Does anybody have an answer for that, or our staff?
If it's, there's an alleyways north of Mission Lakes, those are actually public right-of-way. There's alleyways that are not alleyways, there are just utility easements, those are not the responsibility of the city, so it depends on where you're at. But there are some right-of-way alleys, north of Mission Lakes, there is a few. A lot of the areas have power poles between the two properties, that's just an easement, it's a public easement, it's still your property.
So if it's a utility easement, the property owner's responsible for keeping that cleared?
Correct, correct.
And if it's an actual right-of-way, then more responsible?
Correct.
Alleyways and stuff like that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, I'll let them know. Some issues I'd like to maybe take up for upcoming agenda items. We had a decision at the Planning Commission, which was dealing with windmills and sixty-nine concrete bases that are gonna be left on the hillside because it was deemed that it was too much to remove them, and there were some people up there that didn't like that, so they wanted to appeal, and they found out the appeal cost was two thousand eight hundred dollars to file the appeal. And I'm thinking, wow, that's really, really expensive. What if there was something next to me that I didn't like, and the Planning Commission decided it, and I wanted to appeal it to the city council, I gotta cough up twenty-eight hundred dollars? Seems like a lot of money. We need to revisit that fee schedule, and the city manager, we got that one coming to us?
The fee schedule right now is in process of being revamped.
Okay, so that one, we can look at. Do you have a timeframe on that?
Rebecca, do we have a timeframe on that, or Jeffrey?
Yeah, so we're actually currently in the process of doing a user fee study, and we should have a draft of, kind of a draft of a fee proposal in probably mid to late October.
Okay, so if that one comes back with twenty-eight hundred to appeal in twelve hours to handle the appeal, you know, you'll get some injection out of me, I don't know what the rest of them will be dealing with. And only two other items. One, it was my anniversary, and the good news is, I remembered, and then when she asked me, what year were we born? I scored, I got that one right, too. On Vetri, huh? No, sorry, what year we were married? Oh, no, well, I remember the year she was born, too, I got that bonus question, but they, when we were married, I got that right, so I'm not in the doghouse, I'll tell you, it was way better than the time I forgot. Two weeks later, I'm going, oh, that's what she's mad about. Anyhow, and finally, on November eleventh, Veterans Day, I'm certain there's gonna be a ceremony at Veterans Park, whatever happens officially, and if you will let me know what time that is, I will be certain to be there on November eleventh, and I'm guessing probably everybody here in the city council will, I don't think that one's gonna go unnoticed, but if we have to be there two days, we will, but for sure, I'll be there on the eleventh. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, sorry to go on so long, but it's been a long time.
Mr. Griffith?
I spent most of the summer just kinda getting caught up, some FEMA. Oh, uh, sorry. Did some FEMA training, not a whole lot of out in the public. I did attend the ribbon cutting ceremony at Cabots with Councilmember Betts and Gardner, and then I attended Senior Citizens Day at the Senior Center. We provided them with some little swag bags, not much in there, but they got a nice reusable bag with the logo and the Senior Center on there. They were very appreciative. I urge everybody to at least stop in and check it out. A lot of great people. I actually met a woman who was a veteran of the Korean War, she was ninety-two years old, and she was very proud of that, and I thanked her for her service. And then I attended the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Workshop. That was a four-hour workshop on requirements for getting state grants for affordable housing projects. It was pretty intensive, I walked away, I still don't understand half of it, so I kinda have to go through the materials to understand it, and that's pretty much about it.
Thank you, Ms. Pye.
I was not trying to talk, but Mr. Mett, Betts, you brought up something about apartment owners, and we have to now, before we put something on the agenda, have to have to. So if you wanna put it on the agenda to discuss, I'll be with you.
I'll finish up tonight with, did have, we tried to take a few weeks off, so we give staff a little bit of a break, but our break doesn't always happen, so during this time, on July tenth, I attended Riverside County Transportation Commission Meeting. Couple things that are concerning to you is that coming up in 2020, they're looking at putting a half-cent sales tax on the ballot. The reason for this is there's just not enough money to repair the highways out there. So this is the rationale. At this time, it has not been, it has not completely been considered that it will go on the ballot, but there is a, a movement by the commission to have a firm do some studying out there to see if there's a need for this, and if it would pass in the future. Being in the 2020 ballot, that would be, it's gonna be kinda tough with everything else on there. But with that said, it'll be something that you'll have to decide as a voter, only the voters will decide this. Also, there was a plan for the, we do a twenty-year plan for highways. The biggest issue with the highway system in California is as soon as you repair or add lanes, there's more lanes that are needed because of the population. The biggest project that was completed the last year was some of the, the fast-track lanes through Corona, and that still didn't help relieve all the traffic, and Corona still is backed up. They're working on I-15 right now, and so it's, there's a lot of money being poured in there. The Southwest District in Temecula needs a lot of work, the Banning Pass needs a lot of work. We're fortunate in the Coachella Valley because twenty-five percent, many years ago, a committee was put together, Coachella Valley Association of Governments, and a vote was made through the county to separate twenty-five percent of the funding to the Coachella Valley for our own votes within the Coachella Valley, the eight cities in the county, to fund projects on our transportation systems here. But the west, the western part of the county still has a lot of work to do, and so decisions will need to be made. Eight point seven million dollars was approved for a platform in Indio. This will bring the music festival trains to the Coachella Valley. It was started as a trial many years ago, and it worked really well. This year, they'll be selling tickets plus train tickets from the Los Angeles, San Diego, and San Luis Obispo area to the Coachella Fest. And so this will be, the platform is approved, it'll be built in Indio, Amtrak will have a place to embark, and then embark for the ride home from the Coachella. I attended the Coachella Valley Association of Government Transportation Meeting, where I was elected vice chair of the committee, and the other issue was signal signalization. We've talked a lot about that in the valley, synchronizing the signals throughout the Coachella Valley to move traffic at a better rate in the future, that they spoke about many times, is that your smart cars now just won't back you up, but they'll actually communicate with intersections and lights so that they know when there's multiple vehicles coming, and they can move the traffic even faster. It's very, very sophisticated hardware that will go into those systems. As they receive grants through the federal government and the state government, these systems will be put in. The big discussion was that the current controllers will not be usable, and for anyone that's put in new systems with these current controls, they'll have to be replaced, but it comes from a federal grant, I believe, most of it. So in the future, they continue to do this, I believe our Palm Drive leg is one of the first ones that will be synchronized. There was a meeting, and the committee's called the Climate Investment Ad-Hoc Committee for SEBAG. I am on that committee along with Cathedral City, Coachella, and the county. Assemblyman Garcia, our assemblyman, has been pushing for cap and trade dollars to come back to the valley, and he was very successful, and I believe it was thirteen million dollars coming back to the city of Coachella for housing projects and a Sunline Transit area to be developed. We're trying to copy what they were doing so that we could find thirteen million dollars for our city. Cathedral City's working on a transit station, and also Sunline's part of this committee, and the CEO is working also with us on a possible, possible transit station here in Desert Hot Springs, so. Bringing more as that, that comes about. City Manager, I met with Mission Springs Water District. There was a meeting with Rancho del Oro folks. If you know where Rancho del Oro was, that's the first subdivision at the top of west that was built in Desert Hot Springs, there's a small contingent of individuals that like to meet with us. They have a good relationship with Painted Hills Middle School, and the principal, Dr. They have a good relationship with Painted Hills Middle School and the principal, Dr. Granger up there. They put together a room that the community can use. And so with that said, there was a handful of local constituents and Rancho del Oro folks asking questions to myself. Mayor Potem Pye was there for a short period of time, she had to go to another meeting. Our police chief was there and our code enforcement was there. With that said, I did appoint, there has been a Committee that, I see Mr. McKee in the audience back there, nice, I like your hair, you're a rock star. Obviously, I'm jealous because I can't grow any. Mr. McKee and I led, when he was on City Council, an effort with the Rancho del Oro folks to lead a lighting landscaping maintenance district that was never formed by the housing, which was supposed to be formed by the developer, but it never was in the nineties. They have wanted, they now want to continue that. One of the members was sick for a little bit, but now they want to continue that Committee. I've guaranteed, or I've given them the Committee of Mr. Gardner and Ms. Pye to work with them on that. They have their parameters and they'll be working moving forth. I'm bringing something to the City Council, working with this Committee. And then last, I attended the Riverside County Transportation. I'm on the Budget and Implementation Committee, not a lot on there that pertain directly Desert Hot Springs, except for an update on the Highway sixty project. If you have traveled to Moreno Valley, you'll see that in what they call the Badlands from Interstate ten through to Moreno Valley, they're adding truck climbing lanes on both sides. To do that is about a two-year project. They have to move about two million cubic feet of dirt. Be very careful when you're driving through there. It is now down to one lane on the westbound. It'll eventually be down to one lane on the eastbound. It is very important that this project get underway as it's been planned for over ten years. It's finally been funded and it will help move traffic in between the I-ten corridor and Moreno Valley, which is really bulking up on their industries. So a lot of truck traffic in the future coming through there. Again, with that said, there's another year of, I believe, that lane closures before they start to wrap up the project, which will be another six months after that. So another year and a half at least of that project moving forth. Lots of big, heavy equipment in there, so please beware. And I think there are some lane complete closures during some nighttime activities. So if you aren't on social media, if you are on social media, you can go to RCTC and type that in and you can download an app, which would actually give you the up-to-date times and travel times. You can also look at your Google Maps to see how the traffic's flowing through there. But always, always plan ahead as you might need to take the I-ten to fifteen corridor into Riverside rather than the Moreno Valley corridor, as it might be overloaded. That's all I have tonight. With that said, we're gonna move on to the public hearing. We have one item on our public hearing tonight. It's item number five, an urgency interim ordinance adopting a moratorium on the establishment of any marijuana facilities and any use or activity related thereto for properties located in downtown area near City Hall, specifically on the Pearson Boulevard between Cactus Drive and Mesquite Avenue, on Palm Drive between Anacoma and First Street, on First Street between Cactus Drive and Mesquite Avenue, and on Anacoma Avenue between Cactus Drive and Palm Drive. This report will start from our Community Development Director, Rebecca Depp.
Mr. Mayor, before we do, I have a proximity refusal on this item. I won't be able to participate. My wife and I own a hair salon that is right in the middle of this area. And the way the rules are set up, if you have a financial interest within five hundred feet of the area being considered, then you must not participate in the discussion. So I will plead the dice.
Thank you. As soon as he's off the dice, staff may begin their report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The city currently regulates marijuana facilities as they relate to land use within this Desert Hot Springs municipal code. State law currently protects local licensing practices, zoning, and ordinances and other local actions taken pursuant to the city's constitutional police power. The storefront retail facilities and marijuana testing facilities within the municipal code are allowed currently in the city's commercial zoning districts. The subject area for the proposed moratorium is directly adjacent to or within close proximity to City Hall. Although certain marijuana facilities are currently allowed within the city, the subject area may not be suited for marijuana facility use since the subject area or portions thereof is a prominent welcoming area for the city residents and visitors since it's adjacent to, or again, within close proximity to City Hall and the city's Civic Center area. And two could be used for different land uses that depend on the convenient access to City Hall and the Civic Center area. If marijuana facilities were permitted in the established, to be established in the subject area without appropriate regulations, such uses might be established in areas that could conflict with policies of the future general plan. City staff needs time to develop appropriate zoning regulations, uses, and development standards for this subject area. If approved, the proposed ordinance would cause a temporary suspension of the processing of any incomplete application or approval of a future entitlement for this subject area. I'll be happy to answer any questions, as well as our city attorney is here to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of Council, if I may, as I was talking to staff a little bit earlier today, we would like to add a clause in the ordinance, something to the effect of maybe a Section one A, for example, that this ordinance shall not affect existing approved entitlements or existing operations located in the subject area from expanding their business to adjacent properties located within the moratorium area. We just want to make it sure that it wouldn't affect existing businesses.
Thank you. At this time, we'll entertain questions of staff from the City Council. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that Ms. Rahey answered the question, but I wanted to run it by Rebecca again. For instance, if we, and by my count, I've got five cannabis facilities that fall within this zone that are up and operating and in business at this moment. And I know a couple of them have long-term plans of expansion and things like that. Although the moratorium is only forty-five days, if they should show up to ask for a permit to expand, would that prohibit them from doing that?
With the added section that Ms. Rahey just added, it would not. It would allow them to expand into adjacent properties through the CUP amendment process, but it would not allow a brand-new facility to come in and apply.
Okay, so this wouldn't affect anybody's current construction or anybody's proposed construction that has a valid CUP or is already in operation at this point, or that has pulled permits at this point and is working on their project, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Nobody else in the queue? We're gonna open the public hearing at this time. We will, there's, there's three positions you can take on this. You can be in favor, you can be opposed, or you can just have neutral comments. The first one will start with in favor, the second one will be opposed, and the third one will be neutral comments. Decide which one of those categories you fit in. When you do come to the podium, please state your name and that will begin your time. The name is important to be recorded. If you want to name your project or anything else, it's up to you, it's optional, but your name is the important piece and that starts your time. So we'll open the public hearing, we'll take any testimony in favor of this moratorium. Sorry, Donna, hold on one sec. Yes, Donna? No, this is the, this is directly about a moratorium on no facilities within that, the parameters that I spoke to. This would not be an overall city moratorium. The moratorium in a specific area, Palm Drive, Pearson Boulevard, between Cactus and Mesquite, First and Anacoma, basically the downtown area. Right now, the public hearing is open to people in favor of the moratorium. Yes, ma'am?
The reading, the language there, there's nothing about the time frame. It's a moratorium, only for forty-five days?
Correct. As of time, the urgency moratorium would be only forty-five days. And then the City Council would revisit this in forty-five days. And the moratorium could be extended up to twenty-two months. Correct, staff? According to the report?
Twenty-two months, fifteen days. It could be extended for a total of, total of two years. The first period's just for forty-five days.
Sweet, all yours.
You gotta start somewhere.
Yes.
My name is Donna Wardine. I've lived in Desert Hot Springs for nineteen years, nine months. I am a property owner. And a couple of years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, I spoke here asking, please, 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 let's not have advertisement on TV or on the radio or a big sign saying, oh, the pot store, it's really easy to find, it's right across the street from Desert Hot Springs City Hall. And so I'm very much in favor of this. There are plenty of other commercial locations available for businesses and I'm also not in favor, and maybe I'm out of step, but I got the microphone, I'm not in favor of grandfathering businesses to, that are there to expand. It's one thing if they're there, but to expand and become hugely commercial is just not, I don't think in the best interest of Desert Hot Springs, which I love so much. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also didn't take my jacket off, be disrespectful. For some reason, our air is really struggling tonight and I'm starting to sweat, so I'd rather not stink and get it out there than... Yes, Donna, you have one more question? Are you gonna be in favor? Okay, we're in favor at this time.
Trust me, I do. My name is Don Schulte, D-O-N-N, last name Schulte, S-H-O-L-T-Y, a resident of Desert Hot Springs for twelve and a half years. I am definitely in favor of a moratorium and I don't think that the city, I'm probably going out of bounds, too. And in a way, I think the police department may have dropped the ball in certain situations. My opinion is I don't think there should be any more dealers' cannabis facilities with items for sale than there are liquor stores with liquor for sale. I believe if you have any in a compartment that driver or passenger can get to, you should be arrested, just like alcohol, where it has to be in a closed container or in the trunk. I know that they're now coming out with a breathalyzer for marijuana or cannabis usage. I hope the police department takes every penny they have and gets it. I think that the Council should be very harsh on people driving under the influence, no matter what it is. It just, the city is getting known throughout the valley. And my wife and I have contacts through different organizations throughout the valley. And, you know, we were known for as Desperate Hot Springs. And as far as the manufacturers are going, you get tax money, hey, tax money's good. But as far as selling it to people, so they can use it while they're driving or walking intoxicated, I don't think this city needs it. And I really think you need to look at what you've allowed so far to this date. And a quick thing about streets, does that count, city streets too, or just highways?
That just counts highways.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in favor of this moratorium? Last call, final call. Move on to taking testimony for those in opposed to this item.
Good evening, City Council, City staff. My name is Jocelyn Kane. I'm here on behalf of CVCAN, the Coachella Valley Cannabis Alliance Network, representing about a hundred and twenty-five supply chain and affiliated businesses working and paying taxes in the valley. Many of them are here in Desert Hot Springs and are super happy to be here. With all due respect to the residents and their, you know, feelings about what's too much, this is a legal business and this is one that I think that the city of Desert Hot Springs has embraced for obvious reasons and the state of the city. You spoke quite eloquently about it, Mayor Mattis. Tonight, you're considering a moratorium on these businesses around City Hall and I'd ask you to consider the following. The notice, while meeting legal requirements, was insufficient for the industry to properly analyze the impact of this action. There would be a lot more people here had there been a lot more notice. Many people leave town for the long holiday weekend and the notice was sent on Thursday prior to a long holiday weekend. While the city has the right to determine its land uses, and we respect that right, there are impacts to businesses operating in the area being considered for the moratorium. City Attorney spoke to some of that and we would ask you to expressly exempt those businesses operating in the area and those in the pipeline as well. So however you make that super clear, operating businesses, extensions to those businesses, and anyone in that pipeline from the beginning to the end. Moratoria are not best practice in making public policy. If the city needs time to assess how to improve the area in question and attract certain types of businesses, we understand and support this aim. We believe there are other ways to do this kind of economic development and are certainly happy to help. It's unlikely that the work that needs to get done is gonna get done in forty-five days. We see moratoria happen in Palm Springs and they've extended it and extended it, and I'm afraid that that will happen here. And that's a problem for the industry. Please don't take this industry for granted. We are here based on the open-armed approach that Desert Hot Springs has had for years and wish to continue to improve the city through the payment of taxes to support better roads, public safety, parks, and other amenities. We are not clear on how cannabis dispensaries are inconsistent with the surrounding uses or detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare in commercial areas. CVCAN asks you not to support this action tonight, or at least continue this item for a period of time that allows us to better analyze the action and its impacts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker? Yes, just come forth whoever's ready. Please prepare for the next speaker after this one. State your name.
Okay, my name is Nancy Brown. I've been a resident of Desert Hot Springs for thirty-one years. And actually, I arrived here before they even had traffic signals. In addition, just to make my standing a little clear, I stand opposed to the moratorium as it applies to somebody who would already have an existing conditional use permit that was forced to be expired due to bureaucratic activity from the city. Okay, so that's, so I'm not talking about just, you know, somebody coming in new and wanting a cup. But I worked forty-five years for the US government. Thirty of those years were second-line management and I was involved with space acquisition and property management. So I do have a little background experience in this. But as a resident, I've seen all sorts of shenanigans on the part of past councils, such as conflicts in voting, land development, and zoning. There's always an ulterior motive behind an action. I was hopeful this behavior was behind us, too, but I see not. There's one such person that's in the room that actually filed the first application for conditional use permit and was the first to be approved and was the only woman who was approved and the only resident from the city of Desert Hot Springs that was approved. She has more vested interest in this than anyone else. Now, she received her cup in May of two thousand and seventeen. And so it was up this year for continuation or extension. What I've seen in my relationship with her and being involved with some of her trials and tribulations is that she got caught up in a lot of bureaucracy from the city, a lot of misinformation, some of it false information intentionally. some of it false information intentionally. They intertwined the extension of the cup along with getting the business plan approved and which had different extension dates. And so what happened is the cup extension was allowed to expire. And how convenient is it that it just did so? Now, the building in question is at Palm and Pearson at one-one-nine-four-zero Palm Drive, directly across from City Hall, which was already owned by the individual before all the development started with the City Hall. But the city knew where it was moving to and what was surrounding it. And so it's sort of like closing the barn door, you know, after the horses are gone. So we're coming up with this moratorium which could be extended for twenty-two months, and I will just bet you that it will be in an effort to break that person who has already paid exorbitant fees, including those twenty-eight-hundred-dollar ones, and then told that you have to start over because her appeal wouldn't even be heard. Not only was it an oral decision, but there was never any confirmation in writing which would have included the basis, and if there are no appeal rights, then it would state so. I mean, I'm sorry, I work for the federal government, that's unheard of, that you would have a city do something that was a negative impact to a building owner who's trying to start a business, who was up at the beginning, at the beginning of the process, supporting everything that the council was doing, and not even give them appeal rights or let it be heard by somebody else. I mean, maybe I'm wrong. If you think we're running an autocratic system, well then, why don't we just say so? As I was saying about the delays and false claims, it really, one of the main one, the recent one, was after she had the extension, and that would be Stephanie Bodie, who is here, she was told that she had to resolve these code violations before she could have any extensions. Now, I'm sorry, but to me, that was an obvious tactic to break her and/or extort additional fees. And the question is, what's the motive? Now, this is my own opinion, but I see something happening, and that would be because of visits to City Hall and the community development area where our contractor visited. It was like, oh, hush, hush, he's coming, he's part of her. To me, that stinks of collusion. I would like to see a government, I can't get it at the federal level, but I would hope that in a small community like Desert Hot Springs, we would be transparent and everybody would get a fair deal, especially a pioneer. Now, in my example about these violation codes, both the contractor and the building owner, Ms. Bodie, contacted the staff, the planning commission and so on, and nobody, not one single one of your staff could find any violations written. They went through the history, they said no, they sent one of their staff people to the building for an inspection and could not identify anything. Now, I'm talking about collusion again. It was a deliberate attempt to delay the processing of the request for extension. And I will say again that government, especially city government, is supposed to work for the citizens. Instead of working with her, our city has worked against her. I urge the council to thoroughly review your moratorium request and also review Ms. Bodie's history for the cup extension and approve her business plan, which has been submitted, along with the blueprints and the twenty thousand dollars that she's additionally spent the contractor for work in the building to get it up to speed. Now, one of the things that I guess I wanted to say was that she is not going to be a typical dispensary. Her primary function is to have a wellness center and an education center to talk to people about the effects of CDB and THC, meeting medical needs, and if they are terminal cancer, what it could do for you, and so on, and not dispensing directly to that person with recreational products or edibles or whatever. Anyway, and it would be the only such facility that had a dual purpose throughout this valley, the high desert, and honestly, I believe the state of California. So I would urge you to make, to check your conscience on this and think about what's happened and correct it. And I thank you for allowing me to speak. This was my first time, and I think I'll be back.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. There's no clapping during this process to waive the council's decision. That is a legal law by the state of California. So please refrain yourself, or you will be asked to leave the room. Thank you. That's just during public hearings. During the administrative calendar of public comments, clap what you want. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mattis and Honorable Counsel. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on this subject. I also support Stephanie Bodie in her attempts to open a health, healing, and wellness center here in Desert Hot Springs. Cannabis is not all about cultivation. There are so many ways that cannabis can heal people. And sadly, today, I hear more and more people with severe medical problems, with cancer, Parkinson's, they don't know what to do. Ms. Bodie is an expert on cannabis oils, healing cannabis oils. She has helped many, even animals, dogs, cats. She, her passion is not to make a fortune. Her passion is to bring the healing of cannabis to the forefront and talk about this. We plan to schedule to have a lot of naturopathic people from our valley come here and speak, not only on cannabis, but other things to help people not have to use drugs, get away from opiates, get away from all of the medicines that actually end up causing illness to get worse. We think that there is not enough available information on these subjects. Ms. Bodie has complied with everything asked of her in this process, and it has been difficult. She has spent her life savings to become a business of the city. I feel that the most important thing that Desert Hot Springs can do is to embrace business owners that are starting and have a passion to make this city a better place and brand this city, not as a cultivation place, but more of a healing and wellness place because we have the other component, the wonderful water of our city that helps so many people with arthritis and bursitis and all those things. So she, we kind of feel, and I'm a member of CVCAN and I'm a member of the NAIC, the National Association. So we feel that somehow, because all of a sudden, this ordinance, immediate ordinance came out of nowhere, there was no time for preparedness to address this. We only found out about this two days ago, even though you, I guess, put it on the agenda within the seventy-two-hour limit, but it kind of left us weak in being able to address this subject. And the passion of us and many, I'm a woman business owner. I started my business in nineteen-seventy-eight. And I can tell you that it took a lot to overcome the glass ceiling. It's kind of still that way. But let's us as a city embrace this opportunity. We have an opportunity here to help Ms. Bodie get this up and going. It will be a beautiful facility because I know the work of Juan Alvarez, and he is an expert at the work that he does. It will be beautiful, it will be a compliment to the city. And I'm not necessarily opposed to the whole moratorium. We have a lot of dispensaries in town, but I feel that this should be defined not as a dispensary, but a healing and wellness, which is what it's proposed to be. So it's not kind of grouped into that category. However, yes, they do offer cannabis oils, and I think that's wonderful because I have so many people that could use her help. And I'm just asking you to review the fact that she has done all of her compliance. And if you decide to go ahead with the moratorium, I would ask that you grandfather her because she is right at the point of getting everything resolved and getting open and making this a productive business for our community. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I have a question first.
Yes.
Grandfathering, does that include this voting?
That would be a decision by the city council. I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that talks about that. If we're gonna speak, Mr. Gibbene, I'm gonna have to have you come to the mic so they can record you. I'm gonna have to have you come to the mic so you can be recorded with your questions.
I'll speak as if it is shutting Ms. Bodie down. I don't use the product. I have nothing to do with the product. It's totally out of my life. I don't care about it. I'm a citizen activist. I run an independent website in the city. It's the only independent news channel. It's called newsanddhs.com. It's independent because nobody pays me to do it. I have my opinions, and I put my opinions on the website, but it's called newsanddhs.com. So people have their own hidden reasons for what's going on here in this situation. And I was alerted to what was happening here tonight by Ms. Janice Gao, and she asked me to come down and say a few things if I could catch up to speed on what's going on. So Mayor, City Council, I'm here to address you, but I'm also here to alert some people to what I would like to describe as, if you have a car that's doing something funny, you run down a list of what could be causing the car to be doing that. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna outline some things about this moratorium that stand out to me as potential reasons because there are hundreds of reasons that they hide from you. Not hide, but they keep to themselves, and they post this, and then they don't tell you, so it's up to you to figure it out. But you have history on your side to show you what some of these things might be. And if you can narrow down what some of these things might be, you'll have a better understanding maybe of where they're coming from. Now, again, I don't know what it is, so I'm gonna speculate as if I'm trying to diagnose a car problem, but this situation problem. NIMBYism, not in my backyard, is a potential here. They don't want this across the street from them. That could be part of it. I'm not gonna say that any one reason is gonna be the reason why this could be happening. But the fact that it came up in a very short period of time means that they knew about it in advance. But I'm gonna speculate and say that they didn't want to put this out before their break because it would give people way too much time to talk about this. So they strategically brought it out, in my opinion, they strategically brought it out right as they came back. And it won't look good for the twenty-two month if they get this first part passed. That building has been empty for a very long time, and I've watched this city for the last few years very closely, and I've taken stock in what's been empty and what's been sitting empty for a very long time. And that building has been painted. It was a haunted house. It's been sitting empty. It had a lot of problems. And here's somebody who wants to occupy it. So, but that, I don't believe, is anything that they care about. What I think that they care about are a lot of other agendas that are gonna flow through the city that what they're having to do is they're having to put a hold on this and again withhold the real reasons why that's going on and present just the moratorium and let you figure out why. So I'm in favor of small businesses, and this looks like this is a woman who's really directly affected by this moratorium right after it was proposed. So I see something that's fishy in there. So a small business person, great, I'll back you up because insiders, I don't believe, would have too much of a problem doing this. If you had a big name in this city and you wanted to do this, maybe they might let it go. I would say, one of the things, Peanut Gallery chuckles over there. I always love that. The vortex plan includes that corner, and that corner is to be developed, and it looks like that they want it to be mixed use in the future because what I was told tonight that this is part of the general plan. The reasons why Ms. Deming said this came on was because this may conflict with the general plan or what the use is going to be. The city, the gateway to this, to the City Hall is right in that area, and they're concerned with that. But if you go about five buildings down, there's a boarded-up building. It's about, it's been there for at least the whole time I've lived here.
Excuse me, can you talk to us?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. I would say consider what's in line now as an option to let that go and halt it. If you're going to impose a moratorium, I would suggest you have a moratorium on anything past Ms., I don't even know her name. I just see a person, Ms. Bodie. I would say impose a moratorium just past her, considering what she's put into it. I don't see anything that's coming up about this moratorium due to her being behind on any code violations. So I see this as an end-around attack on her, possibly. Not personal, but she, her business. Maybe the city knows there's some violence involved in this, and they don't want it in the city. I'm just, again, I'm diagnosing what I think might be involved, might not be involved. It's like when you go to a car mechanic, he's gonna say, could be this list of things. That's all I'm doing. I'm not accusing. So the shaking of the head tells a lot.
Should I give me your, to address the city council, the city council only?
Yes, okay, okay. Majority, maybe they do expect that there would be crime, and they don't want that around the City Hall. But I do know that this happened just recently. In Austin, Texas, they approved homeless to live on all public land, if they want to sleep on public land, except on City Hall grounds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Were any opposed at this point? Ladies and gentlemen, if you have a conversation, please take it outside. This is a public hearing.
My name is Stephanie Bodie. I'm a resident here of Desert Hot Springs. Hello, everyone. I am, I don't know what else to do. I wish you would go on with your moratorium, let me do my thing over there. I don't know what else I can do. I had no code violations. I've done everything that you guys want me to. I followed all of your rules of rehab the building in the process of it and the zoning that you want me to do it. I've done everything you want me to do. What else can I do? I have everything. I put everything on the line to do this financially. I have patients that are relying on me. I have people that have helped me out that are relying on me to open. There were no code violations. We were chasing imaginary code violations from June eleventh to now. It cost twenty-six thousand dollars to chase those imaginary code violations that didn't exist. I don't know what else I can do other than say, you know, you guys know. At least I know you guys know, you two know that I've put everything into this, and it's always been about the pay. been about the patients. Unfortunately, it's turned into a financial thing for me also, but it always will be about the patients. I don't think that you guys understand the, if I told you, if you had a loved one that was passing away that had cancer and I told you that instead of putting them on opiates, you could start them on a medicine where it will control their pain and as they build up tolerance and they take more, it'll actually be a therapeutic dose to help stop, maybe even cure their cancer instead of opiates where you can only take so much or it will kill you and you die a painful death because you have no pain medicine. Cannabis isn't like that. Think about that. We have the ability. We have the know-how. We're out there on Front Street. We can show everyone else, just like you did with the cultivation, be on the cutting edge, show other cities how you can actually take care of the medical marijuana patient. That's our, that's what we should be doing as recreational anyway. We have all these growers here. We can show cities how we can take care of our own. We don't need Medi-Cal. We don't need Medicare. We can take care of our own. It's only a plant. We could be on the forefront. We can really show everyone how to do it again. There's no negatives to this and I don't know why it's so hard to make it happen. One in three of us will be affected by cancer, either directly one we love or someone that we know. So, I hope that you don't wait until you're in that position watching your loved ones suffer and not have anything to help them with when we had the opportunity to teach thousands of people about it and we chose not to. I ask you that you please, let me continue on. There is some confusion as far as my application goes. I don't care about the confusion. I don't care whose fault it is, who misunderstood who. The point was, we were working at a lightning pace. My whole team of contractors, engineers, we were working at a lightning pace. Does it really matter that who misunderstood who or who did what or who? The point was, we were working on getting it done. Every minute in State of California, one person dies of cancer, three people are diagnosed with cancer. It's going to be one of us. You're going to want alternatives. That's it.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Second call for opposed, final call for opposed. Going to close the public hearing on opposed. We'll go to public testimony on natural, neutral. I was looking at your hair again, Joe. It's all natural and I'm jealous.
If people remember, we tried to do one of these moratoriums earlier. We were trying to put a moratorium on marijuana building by I-10. And during that discussion, it was determined because so many people came in to complain about, well, we're building this huge facility and you're in a position that in effect you're shutting us down. We've spent a lot of money buying the property at exorbitant rates because of the zoning for marijuana. And the council listened to that. It let people stay in that zone even though to this point, two years later at least, no construction's been done on those sites for many of those projects. That we're in a position that we basically let them go because they were theoretically underway. None of them were as far underway as Ms. Bodie's project, none of them. But we allowed them to not get caught up in that ordinance putting in the moratorium. We, I think, basically put two-hundred-and-fifty acres worth of property that no one had developed a plan for in that moratorium. It was not all the property along I-10. We listened to the people that were involved in it. One of the things that I always stressed when I was a council member was being the same with everyone, treating everyone the same. As far as I'm concerned, this is not happening in this case. We're creating a situation where we're punishing a person who is trying to work through a project and trying to use an ordinance to keep her from finishing it. I guess that's all I have to say, except for the fact that I think if we're going to treat everyone the same, if we're going to treat everyone equally and follow the precedent that we set in the past, we should do that here too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking this over, studying it, going through the history of the project, doing everything else, we have to remember as council, there's two separate issues here. There's the issue with the project in question, Ms. Bodie's project. She was granted a CUP. She granted extensions for that CUP. She never completed the work required for that CUP and those CUPs expired. That's one issue. Issue number two is the proposed moratorium in the area around City Hall. And if we bifurcate the issue, we look at the issue of the moratorium. I would support the moratorium because we have an existing group of businesses there. As my count, there's one, two, three, four, five that fall within that area. We've made it clear that those five properties, those five businesses can continue to operate. They can expand if they needed to. We had, if I recall, Desert Finest had an application before the Planning Commission just last month that was approved for an expansion of theirs. I know that the Micro Butterie has plans for expansion that are worthy and worthwhile and those will not be affected by this as I understand it. So, those projects are still underway. Keeping a moratorium on any future new businesses there, to me, makes a lot of sense in that downtown corridor. We have a lot of storefronts there that can be used for other things. Residents want more stores, want more restaurants, more coffee shops, more things like that. We have, as I said, five other dispensaries within walking distance of City Hall. Now, had Ms. Bodie's project complied with all of the requirements of her CUP without, even with the extensions, she would be in, she wouldn't be affected by this. Her CUP expired because she failed to get the work done as she promised to get it done.
This is not open for debate.
So...
Ladies and gentlemen, this is not open for debate. This is a public hearing that is required by the state of California. If you have any more comments to be made, you'll be escorted out of the room. Thank you.
So, the permit has expired. Had the permit been, the CUP been in effect, it wouldn't be affecting her at this point. But the permit expired. For whatever reason it expired, it has expired. That takes her piece of it out of the equation. So, the debate, in my mind, is squarely on whether we should have a moratorium or not. I am in support of having a moratorium because we have existing businesses around there. Even if they want to expand, they can do it and we need to keep those businesses, those storefronts available for other uses and keep our downtown as bright and clean as it is. So, I would urge my council members to support the moratorium, remembering that it's a separate issue with Ms. Bodie's project and the fact that their CUP has expired. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Griffith?
I have to say, I agree on a lot of counts. I think, number one, most of the testimony that I heard opposed was linking two separate items. This public hearing was about a moratorium. This was not about a particular project. It was about a moratorium only. There is a lot of presumption that this is about this project or this is because of this project. Yeah, and that is not the case. They are two separate items. I was part of the Planning Commission that approved the extension of the project and the enthusiastic response that we got was that everything would be completed in forty-five days. That was a requirement of the extension of the CUP and that was not done. So, from my perspective, that's a totally separate item. This is about a moratorium. What I did hear those who oppose it was, don't take the cannabis industry for granted and I don't think that we do. I know we're working on the general plan update and I do think we need sometimes to stop and take stock of where we are and where we want to go. That's how I view this. Separate issue, moratorium. I'm thinking only of the moratorium. That is where my head is. From that perspective, I think it's smart to take a little break. It's forty-five days. Will it be extended? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. But I do think it's valuable sometimes to step back and see where we want to go.
Ms. Pye?
I have some questions. There was a time, I don't know if I'm asking you or somebody. There was a time when, if I remember, there was a fire or something happened. And my understanding, Ms. Brody, at that time wasn't aware she needed to repair that. Am I right? You know where I'm trying to go?
I couldn't speak to the original fire and the knowledge Bodie had, but there was a fire and there was work done subsequent to the fire.
So, yes, council member Pye, you are correct. There was a fire on that property that took place prior to Ms. Bodie entering into the purchase agreement for that property. Ms. Bodie did work hand in hand with the previous consultant that the city had on board out of our city attorney's office, Mr. Stephen Alvarado. And they did work out a compliance plan to mitigate the issues within the building. And so, there were several code compliance issues that were addressed within that plan. And so, those were some of the previous code violations that were spoken to Ms. Bodie about during the Planning Commission process. In addition to those previous code violations, there was additional unpermitted work done within the building after those code violations were cleared up via that compliance agreement. And so, those are the remaining items that are outstanding for that particular project. It is not an open code compliance case. It is actual illegal work that was done within the building once Ms. Bodie took possession of the building without permits. And so, that forty-five day window of time that was given was to allow for Ms. Bodie to obtain the proper permits for the illegal work that was done. And that is what was not completed, which led to where we're at today, which is the time extension was not granted because it was not done within that forty-five day window.
As city staff knows, I am having a little bit of difficulty with this one. In one sense, we're, the moratorium I have no problem with. I think that we need to plan the downtown. I think we need to plan our future of Desert Hot Springs and we've had multiple business owners in the marijuana industry that aren't here today. And maybe it's because it was a holiday weekend that have been very boisterous in the opinion that we are saturated and they are losing business. And our whole purpose of allowing the sixteen, it was nineteen applicants and then narrowed down to sixteen, was to let capitalism take its place. It's hard to add a section in here to allow expansion of one, but not the completion of another. So, if this was to pass, we have to be consistent. We can't do for one and not do for the other. And that's the argument that is here today and staff disagrees with me on that is that they're not, they're doing for both. But I am a person that ninety-nine percent of the time will agree with my staff on the direction they're going and one percent of the time, sometimes I won't. It's not an easy decision because I see continuity in our community. I see a great future for our community. I try to lead a positive discussion for the future of our community. And as the mayor, the top leader, I have to represent the constituents of our community on what I think is best for our future. Now, I can go back to two thousand and seven when I was first elected and there was a moratorium put on marijuana facilities, period, in the community. That was warranted at that time because we had a bunch of illegal stuff popping up and we had no control of it. So, we needed to control it. We fast forward to opening our arms to marijuana industry and the consensus was that conservative man on the council sits to the left will never vote for this stuff. I did and shocked a lot of people. Opened my arms, became mayor and has been leading the efforts for many years on making sure that this industry has an open path to where they want to be. As Mr. McKee alluded to, there was another moratorium, which was a little easier to develop because it made a lot of sense. Major intersection of a major highway needs to make sure that it has, we balance our community in retail and commercial opportunities in the future. With a general plan that'll be developed in the next year, it makes a lot of sense on making sure that we have the mixture of businesses that will serve our community. I don't know if Ms. Bodie can finish her project in the timeline that was given to her. I honestly had no idea her project was even alive today because it just wasn't on the radar and this wasn't specific to her project. A lot of allegations that were made from that podium tonight and I think it's a lot of misinformation. But there are some facts. The facts are, a moratorium is proposed. This is part of our pathway to our specific plan that we were talking about with the marijuana industry. This is also part of our tactics on the general plan for the future of Desert Hot Springs that'll be developed real soon. So, I'm torn. I don't think you can bifurcate the two issues. That's just my opinion. I think you have to take them as one because I think it affects one. It could affect others and in the future it could affect the way we're developing. So, I still have a tough decision to make here in the next few minutes. And did I ramble on enough to allow you to remember your questions? Mr. Gardner?
I'm not sure if Ms. Demming or Ms. Willem would be the right one to ask on this, but I'm going to throw it out there. Is or is it not a fair statement to say that Ms. Brody's project is, at this point, expired?
That is correct.
So, the CUP has expired. There is nothing outstanding. Her CUP has expired. She's gone past the moratorium or the extension that the Planning Commission granted her. And so, therefore, the project is in effect dead.
Correct. There's no current CUP anymore. It expired.
Okay, thank you. That is the key I think the council needs to keep in mind. We have to separate this issue from the moratorium and the Brody project. The Brody project is dead. Whether we pass this extension or not, the Brody project is dead. So, forgetting for the moment the fact that she would like to keep her project and I sympathize with the amount of money and time that she has spent on that, but she did not complete the requirements of her CUP. The project at this moment in time is dead. It cannot be revived. So, we have to put that piece out of our mind and focus on whether or not the moratorium on new businesses within that core is something we want to pursue or not. And that's what I would ask my fellow council members to keep in mind when they make their decision. Thanks.
Okay, I have a question. You with the hair, you remind me of a situation along... You remind me of a situation a long time ago. There was a guy who wanted to, he wanted a dispensary, but he didn't do everything he was supposed to, and it was simple. He didn't give his phone number. And I was like right there, and I asked you, why are you into this? And you gave me an explanation. So let me ask you a question. What would she have to do? Because part of this was, she was a couple of days before, and she didn't have it completed? What, do it this way. What would it, what would it take for her to do what she's got to do to start all over?
It would require a new conditional use permit application.
Okay. And what would be the cost of that?
I would have to look that up. I don't know that off the top of my head.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Okay. I do know you, and I'm gonna tell you, I know you. You've been to my home, I've been to your home. And yes, it is a different situation. I mean, it's two different situations. And I understand that. I suggest that if she's going to go this far, that she should try again. But if you say you're going to do something in forty-five days, make sure it's forty-five days. If it has to be longer, then make sure that it's longer. I don't think you knew what you were doing when you said forty-five days. You can't talk right now. That's what I think. If you had... That's my suggestion.
Yeah, and I don't know where we go here. There's a couple of issues that we have. This is an urgency item, so all five council members have to be unanimous on whatever decision it makes tonight, because there's only four up here. The issue I have is, according to Ms. Bodie's timeline, that they did submit their, they were ready to submit plans and Title twenty-four and other things under the forty-five day line. The problem, the reason it was denied, and I didn't want to get into the details of this, but now it's open and is getting into details, was the fact that you can't finish plan check in five days. And that would have ended the planning commission's forty-five day period. And so that's the reason it was denied. In this forty-five day, the only thing I can suggest is that the moratorium go forth within the forty-five days. Ms. Bodie's project also be put into the Section One, which approves applications that are, approved applications currently are able to expand. That her project would have forty-five days before the next council meeting for the extension and/or removal of this moratorium to have made significant strides towards her completion of her CUP, and whatever that means in the outline. But I'm not going to sit here, and this is what the debating is about. It gives forty-five day extension. I think it's reasonable for someone that's a constituent of our community. But I know this won't be popular, but again, if not all four of us are on the same page, there's no reason to even vote on this item tonight. Miss Volatop talked me something a while back. She was a lot younger, a lot more better looking than me because I'm an old balding guy, and she was able to use her youth and the fact that she was very nice to be able to put little things into ordinances and things that would frustrate me a lot of times, but she was very, very much a firecracker. Now, there was somebody else that sat in the city council, and he knows I have long hair and a beard, sits in the audience, that would also change my mind on a lot of things because he, even though he was so far left, he could come to the center a lot of times. And that's what a debate's about. I know my questioning and my process today is not very, very popular with some people, and it'll be, it's just a hard decision that you have to make as leader of your community sometimes. So that's where I'm going with this. I'll continue to let the debate go on until we can come up with a consensus before a vote or a motion is made. Mr. Griffith?
If I may answer Ms. Pye's question, I looked it up. The amount for a conditional use permit that as it relates to cannabis uses is six thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Mr. Griffith?
So are you suggesting that we do an extension on an expired CUP? I'm not sure.
I am.
She is.
At this point, the only item before the city council's, the moratorium, it's before the council, is not an extension of a CUP or not. If the council wanted to add in like the APN into the moratorium, the council could do that, but at this point, the CUP is expired. She would have to, Ms. Bodie would have to go through a process of trying to revive that or renew it. That is a separate project that would obviously need a separate public hearing.
The easiest way to do this would be to vote the moratorium through excluding that property and adding this Section, Section One, which is what the city attorney wanted to allow current applicants and businesses to expand if needed. But that would just be the suggestion that would be made at this time because I don't think we have the authority, because that's not agendized, to extend a CUP or add a CUP. So it would be on staff to work with Ms. Bodie over time period to find a pathway for her to continue her business practices.
So, so in other words, what we do is just add that property to the grandfather portion?
No, I wouldn't grandfather. I don't think what we're saying is grandfather. I'm saying what we're doing is giving them an opportunity under the next, under the next forty-five days to make some significant strides towards their business. And then the city council would make a decision in forty-five days when this moratorium is brought back, whether that continues to be part of the exclusion or becomes part of the moratorium. But also adding the Section One, the current applicants that are in that area that they can expand if needed.
I'm, okay, I'm a little unsure. How can we expect her to make improvements in forty-five days if she doesn't have a CUP?
Well, if somebody has an expired CUP, doesn't mean they can't pay to reactivate that CUP. So there is a pathway.
Okay.
That would be her choice, and they would have to, we would have to simultaneously bring that item back for a city council decision in forty-five days. That's the suggestion I would make.
So if I may to read it, cut it into the record, see if this is something that the city council would want if it goes that way. "The ordinance shall not affect existing approved entitlements or existing operations located in the subject area from expanding their business to adjacent properties in the moratorium area, and do also include Ms. Bodie's property, whatever that APN number would be."
Which is one-one-nine-four-zero Palm Drive, APN three-six-three-nine-two-nine-three-zero-two-nine.
So the motion would in a sense be, we would adopt the moratorium with an exclusion for that APN number. Is that correct?
To revisit it in the forty-five days.
Well, we would automatically revisit, wouldn't we?
There needs to be some strong language in there that strives have to be made towards the development of what she has been talking about tonight for the council to review in forty-five days when this moratorium is returned, so that there's something, some kind of direction on paper. I want to make sure it's very clear on the direction.
I, if we, if we do a motion that says we exclude that APN from the forty-five day moratorium, that gives her the option of attempting to reactivate her CUP.
Correct.
And filing for the correct permits.
Correct.
And going at it. And if she does reactivate her CUP at that point, then it becomes moot that she would already be out because it would be treated as if her CUP were in effect today. She wouldn't be covered by this moratorium. So if we exempt this piece of property for forty-five days, am I correct, Jennifer? We exempt this piece of property for forty-five days, she reactivates her CUP within that forty-five days, she would be treated just like any of the other existing CUPs that fall within that moratorium boundary.
That would be correct. I mean, she would, if she happens to reactivate it, the issue is, is that generally, CUPs take a few months to activate because this would be technically a new CUP. So I don't know how long normal CUPs take, maybe four, four, five months, six months, I'm not sure.
What I'm saying here, forty-five days, if she makes those strides to pay the payments, start the process, working towards this, making the corrections that staff has asked her to make on the building and the fire issues and those other things, I know there's no code issues, but there is building permit issues, and reactivates all that, then we can make a decision in forty-five days whether we continue to allow that property to move forward within the, outside the moratorium.
If I can add, yes, the normal process for a conditional use permit without environmental is a three to six month process. However, if there's no proposed changes, I wouldn't foresee the application taking that long. So I think if we had an application relatively quickly, that there would be no reason that it couldn't go to the October planning commission, assuming there's no changes in the application. But that would be under the assumption that we would have an application in the next week. Otherwise, it would be, the hearing would be after the public hearing, or after the approval of the conditional use permit.
Mr. Griffith?
And so included in that, because that is a conditional use permit, would be spelled out those unpermitted items?
Those conditions of approval would be subject to the planning commission. If the planning commission wanted to again add another condition that limited the timeframe or put a condition that required those improvements before a certain period, that would be subject to the planning commission determination.
But they would need to be completed regardless in order for that actually to go through it, inspection and open and certificate of occupancy, right?
That is correct. They will need permits and clear up the unpermitted construction and pull permits for that construction in order to get any kind of certificate of occupancy.
Thank you.
In my mind, if we exempt this piece of property from the moratorium, and Ms. Bodie goes through the process and has reactivated her CUP, again, she falls within the, the same category as the existing businesses that already have their CUP. So I think if we just do the moratorium with an exemption of that piece of property for forty-five days, and that gives her the opportunity to perfect her CUP, if she doesn't perfect her CUP, there's no further action for us to take. That piece of property falls back into the moratorium if we extend the moratorium.
That's why I'm saying it'd be fair for forty-five days to see where she can get, and we can make a decision based on that.
I can, I can.
We're going to make a decision in forty-five days on an extension or not, and this would give us an opportunity to come back in forty-five days and see where she's at.
Yes, I agree. So in that case, and I would make a motion that we adopt the moratorium with an exclusion for the APN, which I didn't write down, but I'm assuming somebody did and did it correctly, so that we don't have a Palm Drive situation again. Private joke. And we go ahead with the moratorium.
Add the Section One that Jennifer wanted.
And with the Section One that clarifies that the existing properties are not subject to the moratorium.
Is that the language you wanted, Ms. Rahe?
The language is a little bit more expansive. It says approved entitlements or existing operations located within the subject area, including expansion of their businesses to adjacent properties, so.
What she said.
Yeah.
There's a motion, you can push your button.
I will second.
Press the second. Is there any more discussion? Please. After the vote? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This is an adoption of an urgency ordinance of the city council. The city of Desert Hot Springs is adopting a moratorium on the establishment of any marijuana facility as defined in Chapter seventeen, point one-eight-zero of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, or any use of activity related thereto for properties located in the downtown area near City Hall, specifically on Pearson Boulevard between Cactus Drive and Mesquite Avenue, or Palm Drive between Akoma and First Street, on First Street between Cactus Drive and Mesquite Avenue, and on Akoma Avenue between Cactus Drive and Palm Drive, the interim urgency ordinance goes into effect immediately.
Hold on one second, Ms. Pye.
I have to state a problem. When you say that we are doing something wrong, that there used to be somebody up here doing something wrong, we're not doing that. We've, we've, the two people that didn't want this voted for. We walked through this, and we figured it out, and we did it the right way. I'm just asking you, don't bring that to me because I'm not like that. I'm done.
The public hearing is closed. Do what you like. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Can I get all the city council members back to the dais, please? Mr. Betts, can I get you back to the dais? Ms. Pye, Mr. Gardner? Are they coming? Are they coming? All right, we'll call back to order the meeting. We're going to move on to the administrative calendar, and we'll start with item number six, the Harborside Water Tower mural. This will be the Assistant City Manager, Dari Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The item before you tonight is a recommendation from the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission to utilize funds from the Art in Public Places account to allow for the installation of a mural on an existing water tower located on the Harborside Project site at the I-ten and Palm Drive. So the Art in Public Places ordinance requires developers in the commercial zone to either pay the required public art contribution into the city's Art in Public Places program in an amount equal to zero point seven five percent of the development project's building valuation exclusive of land, or install public art on or in the vicinity of the site. So the required minimum contribution to the Art in Public Places program for the Harborside Dispensary project was two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is zero point seven five percent of the total project valuation. Now, that amount was paid in full in March of two thousand eighteen, and that is an important thing to consider as we move forward in this item. So currently, a water tower thirty-nine feet by twenty-one and a half feet sits on the most southwesterly side of the project site. The current water tower is a bare-ribbed circular structure that is army green in color. To mitigate the unattractiveness of the structure, the Planning Commission conditioned the project to include landscaping along the perimeter of the water tower. So the water tower is heavily visible from both the I-ten freeway and Palm Drive, which is the main entryway into the City of Desert Hot Springs. To promote the continuation of art in the community, specifically installations and works that recall the history of the city, staff is proposing the installation of a mural on the water tower depicting a replica of a historic billboard that previously greeted drivers along the I-ten freeway as they approached the City of Desert Hot Springs. The replica billboard would be displayed prominently on two sides of the water tower so the art could be viewed from both the I-ten freeway and Palm Drive. So due to the complexity of the proposed project, staff worked with the Buzz Factory, a consultant of the city, to obtain quotes from artists capable of creating the installation on the ribbed surface of the water tower. Multiple vendors were approached, however, many declined to bid due to the nature of the project. Two viable approaches were considered, with the first being the placement of large-format graphics over a painted water tower, and the second being a painted mural over the painted water tower. Staff recommended approval of the painted mural over the painted water tower option as the cost was significantly lower and the paint would be able to withstand the elements for a much longer period of time. The CCAC agreed with that recommendation and continued to move that recommendation forward to the City Council for approval with a slight modification to the original text that was being proposed for the mural. So pursuant to the Art in Public Places ordinance, the CCAC is authorized to review, consider, and make recommendations to the City Council to approve, conditionally approve, or deny the donation of public art and/or the use of Art in Public Places funds. The City Council can approve, modify, or deny the proposed changes to the recommendation from the CCAC. As previously mentioned, the CCAC reviewed the proposed water tower mural on June twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and made a recommendation to the City Council to allow for the following. One, apply the two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars of Art in Public Places contributions that were previously paid by the Harborside Project applicant toward the installation of the painted mural on the existing water tower. Two, they also recommended approval to utilize the Art in Public Places funds totaling twenty-three thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and forty cents, which includes nineteen thousand twenty-nine dollars for the remaining cost of the mural, once the original applicant's Art in Public Places contribution of two thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars were applied to the project cost, and that also includes a standard ten percent project contingency in the amount of two thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and ten cents. And then three, they also recommended approval to allow for the installation in the mural in lieu of previously conditioned a robust landscaping that was in place for the Harborside Project per the Planning Commission's condition of approvals. Now, the CCAC did request there to be some standard landscaping around the bottom of the tower, but they did also request that City Council take a look at that original condition of approval as it pertained to landscaping, which would have covered most of the water tower, and remove that in lieu of the water tower. So with that said, that concludes my staff report. I do have our consultant from the Buzz Factory here. We do have some renderings of the water towers here that you all can take a look at, and then we are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there any public comments at this time? May come forth whoever would like to fight for the podium first. And state your name. Under administrative items, you will have three minutes. Your timer will be on the screen behind us.
My name is Thomas Ritter of the Desert Hot Springs, and I'm going to be the general manager of the Harborside Project when it opens. I, first of all, just want to thank everyone for your time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. I have a few comments. First of all, I'm just wondering if there's any chance to still get in on contributing to the design of this mural. As a business owner, we have a few concerns. In particular, the Spa City sign lettering is significantly larger than any of our signage for our brand name, for our business, and we're concerned that since it is so visible from the freeway from both directions, that it will mislead people to thinking that the business is actually called Spa City and is somehow related to spas and is not the actual business.
Do we have a picture to put up on the screen? Ah, that's why you've got our high-tech deputy city manager behind you trying to help you. There you go. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's all right. You know, so if there is, if there's an opportunity still to maybe submit an alternative design or to get in on the design process to contribute or comment, we would very much appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
May I make a quick comment? First and foremost, I do want to apologize to you all. So the city has been working directly with Mike Platt, who I understand is a consultant from your company, and we did talk to him at length about the design of the proposed project. So I do apologize if that wasn't relayed. I was under the impression all of that had been relayed to you all. So I, again, I'm kind of taken aback here, and I apologize if you all weren't, you know, looped into that.
Let's go ahead and finish public comments, then we can get into question answers.
I'm Christian Chavez. I'm also with Harborside. I am the office manager for the Peer Healing Clinic, which will be the front part of it. So the big concern we have is that sign is significantly larger than any of our signage would be on the building. And as marketing, you know, we want to have something that would relate specifically to it, or, you know, at least something artistic. It doesn't necessarily need to be to our brand of the building. We would like to maybe do a community outreach or maybe propose something else, like bring another muralist on if possible.
Is that all?
That's all.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Sholty?
Don Sholty again, D-O-N-N, last name Sholty, S-H-O-L-T-Y. I remember when Art in Public Places began, I was active with DOT in the commission, and I was really coming in here just to talk about streets. And then I looked at the agenda, and it was like, pow. And my biggest problem is with the water tank. On the way here, I drove down Indian, got on I-ten eastbound, and barely saw the water tank. Now, if it was three times the height, it might be okay, but it's still not. You're already past the off-ramp when you can even read it. Westbound will not see it unless they go to Arco to get gas. And another reason, I mean, a lot of you are probably familiar with Cabot-Uryxah. He has a little pueblo up on our hill here on Desert View, just east of a street called Miracle Hill. And why is it called Miracle Hill? Well, he dug two wells. On one side, he got hot water. On the other side, he got cold water. So these people that put up the sign originally, all they were was investment people. They could care less what they built. That's why you have such small lots downtown. If anything, it should have been, what does it say? Magic Waters? It should have been Miracle Waters. We didn't have Magic Waters. It was sold as Miracle Waters. I mean, if you're going to put it up and spend twenty-three thousand dollars from the Art in Public Places, you should at least investigate and get the name right. But as I say, you cannot see it from the freeway doing seventy-five to eighty miles an hour, which they do. I was in the right-hand lane because there were trucks in the number three lane, so I was in the number four lane. When I was close to the off-ramp, there was no chance of even seeing it. And I guarantee you, the people doing seventy-five and eighty, I don't know if we work with a highway patrol, but our police department would have a lot of action if people actually looked to read it while they're driving by. I mean, consider what you're going to spend. There are so many different things you could spend it on closer to town. I mean, we fought for a long time to have our name on the freeway over crossings. Please don't waste the money on the water tank. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Mike Picardi. I'm chair of the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission. This was brought to us as a historic billboard, and you can see the billboard up in the upper right-hand corner by the green tank. We coordinated with the help of Commissioner Gardner, at the time he was on the Planning Commission, to the owner, with the owner. I came up with the idea of using the billboard because I thought it was really cool, and I thought the green tank was pretty goddamn ugly, excuse my French. And Gary brought us together with Ms. Pratt, is it? Yeah, because I haven't talked to him in a while because the city took it over. We brought this to the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission. It is a piece of art because it represents an antique billboard that was here, part of the city, and the billboard said whatever the waters, it's what it says is what's on there. So the exit sign, basically, it's a piece of art that we want to use to cover the green water tank. We approached the owners of the property. We did a public-private partnership with this, and we passed it unanimously at the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission, and we're asking you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
I'm in opposition, oh, I'm Janice Goff, head of the Art Foundation of Desert Hot Springs. I'm only in opposition of this because I don't see that this is art, or should it come out of our Art in Public Places Fund? This is signage, and I also agree with the fact that it shouldn't be called Magic Waters. Who has ever heard of that in Desert Hot Springs? It should be Miracle Waters if they're going to put a sign up there. But I disagree that this is art, and our Art in Public Places Fund should pay for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Final call?
I am Donna Wardine. I am on this, I'm a commissioner on the.
Community and Cultural Affairs.
Yeah, all that. A lot of these people that are here, some of the people who are here tonight were at some of the meetings where these, this art was being discussed, and there were no comments at that time, and I'm shocked and amazed that they didn't have any input when input could be had. All we're looking for tonight is approval. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Last call, final call, closing comments. Councilmember comments? Mr. Betts?
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I'm sympathetic to some of the pleas that, that we don't use Art in Public Places for signs, but I think this one is art or can be with a couple of changes, and they're minor. Buzz Factory's here, so they'll appreciate this. The font isn't correct. If you're going to use an old-school, if you're going to copy the old-school look of an old-school sign, then what? I'm not looking, I'm looking at the whole audience. Just because I look at you once in a while doesn't mean I'm.
Let's not have interaction.
It's okay. Anyhow, it's late. So if we could use the correct period, the fonts that were at the time, you know, representing that, that would be good. We just missed that. We've just used, looked like, I don't know what font that is, maybe it didn't have the one to match what's there, but since it's going to be hand-painted, it'd be real easy to get that right. Then it, then it looks less like a sign and more like art.
This is tongue-in-cheek, but you could change the name of your dispensary to Spa City and get a free sign. Or if the planning commission approved, you could put up a sign as big as the AMPM has and deal with that. I, and it's interesting that we have one comment that says, everybody's gonna think that this is the name of our thing because it's so visible, and we have another comment that says you won't even see it. I think you're gonna see it. Anyhow, I like the idea. I like, you know, what happened. There's a guy named Jerry Scoos or Scoosi. I just remember hearing the audio that the Historical Society captured from him, and he said, "What happened to the water? They got so busy building houses, they forgot all about the water." And this is about the water. And this is from a guy who swam in the hot springs for twenty years. And they picked the word "magic" back then, which is part of the period art. That was the word they used back then. We might have changed it to "miracle", or Cabot might have called it "miracle". We don't know if he did, or somebody did later. But I think, you know, the inspiration was the original art. I mean, when you go look at an old sign way back when, you look at it, you know right away there's an old sign, and that's what you see when you see this. When I look at here, I'm seeing a modern sign with the wrong font for Spa City and the wrong font for Desert Hot Springs. And if we get that right, and actually have the artist make it look like period art, period art sign, first thing people are gonna imagine when they see this, oh, there's an old sign. And it's not just people driving the car that look and see stuff and notice things off in the distance. I drive all the time. My wife gets to do the sightseeing, but somebody's gonna see it and say, oh, look, there's Desert Hot Springs, let's go. So, I like the idea. I would like to do it, but I would like to make sure the fonts are correct. And I think that's all I got.
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to agree with my esteemed colleague at the end of the dice here. It doesn't quite have the feel that, 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 that at least I had in mind when Mr. Picardi approached me and said, "What can we do with that ugly water tank?" And at the time, that original billboard photograph was circulating on social media. I thought, you know, hey, that wouldn't be a bad thing to put there. And that was, that was what I had picturing in my head, and, you know, this doesn't quite meet the test of that, but that doesn't mean we can't fix that. So, if you want to take that as input as to making it look a little bit more like that original billboard, I would certainly, I would certainly agree with that. I do have to also say, though, to swallow really hard at the cost of it, recognizing that the contribution made by the builder and developer to the Art in Public Places Fund is, goes towards some of that, twenty-one hundred, twenty-six hundred, whatever it was, helps. But, boy, that's a, that's a lot of money. That being said, I do think it's a valuable entrance to our city. That entrance needs some sprucing up. We have, we could approach them on it as well. But overall, I like it. I'm, it seems like ages ago, Mr. Picardi, that you and I talked about this. It was a long time ago, and I'm hoping you guys open up soon. One of the most common questions I get asked is, when is that place opening up? So, it doesn't, we're not waiting for the mural to open it up. So, at any rate, those are my two, two cents on this one. So, thank you, sir.
Mr. Griffith?
Okay, not to drag this out, but I do have some questions. How, can someone answer how long this is supposed to last weather-wise? Two years? Okay. Does that mean it has
Can we get answers from staff, please?
Yes, please. It's far longer than two years, so we'll have Mark from the Buzz Factory address that.
Hello, everyone. Mark Anderson from the Buzz Factory. The two-year designation that you see on the estimate was actually for the large-format graphics. We expect the mural graphics to last much, much longer than that. The other thing that really drove the mural graphics as well was the fact that it would weather more naturally, whereas large-format graphics can start to peel and really look bad when they come off. So, what we expect, as you've seen in lots of towns where there's been water towers for twenty, thirty years, it'll kind of have a natural sort of fading that'll happen and sort of blend in with the environment as well. The one thing that I would say too, just around costs, which I know, you know, we, even when we went quoting it, you know, our jaws, you know, our jaws dropped as well. But what we did was, the first round of estimates that we got were all large-format graphics on the painted water tower. And, and then we really sort of dug in for the muralist, and that drove the cost down forty-five percent. So, those large-format graphics were looking more like thirty-seven thousand.
So, will we say maybe ten years? You think it'll last for ten?
Yeah, I, I think it will with weathering, though, I would say. Natural weathering, yes.
I just say that because it's a lot of money, then I can look at it from a marketing perspective. It is marketing for the town. I would like to see healing waters. That's what we use in Visit Desert Hot Springs, but I'm not tied to that. If you look at the vehicular traffic, I don't know how visitable it will be from the freeway. However, people exiting to Palm Springs off to the left, they might see it. So, you could probably at some point figure out a purview cost for that. In regards to your comment regarding them thinking that your property is Spa City, if I remember correctly, there was a very large sign approved for your facility that was, I don't know, Ms. Demming might know, but seventy-five or ninety feet high or something like that. I don't think with something that high and that visible, which might be more visible from the freeway, they're gonna think that you're Spa City.
Mr. Betts, you're back in the queue.
I'm gonna attempt a motion, if that's okay?
Nobody else in the queue at this time, so please.
Motion to approve. Was it staff recommendation for the painting of the tank as specified with the changes that the font will match exactly the, the, will match exactly the fonts as shown in the historic document? And that, I don't know, does somebody really want to change "magic" to "healing"? Let's get a little vote tally. Okay, and then we just keep it home with the "magic waters", but the font must be exact.
Is there, I need a second before we can open for discussion. Is there a second?
Can we modify it really quick?
Well, I'm listening.
You could modify his motion, yes.
I don't know if we need to be as specific as the exact font, but have it look more
No, you know what, I know enough about this that, and you got a painter, and they can get an exact, they can match it exactly. It's not gonna be impossible, so I'm going with the word "exactly".
Is there a second? Alright, it's open for discussion. I have a question for Mark. Is there a reason the font isn't as, never mind, I got a question for Doria, never mind, Mark.
Actually, just have a comment. So, we're, we're going back to, so when we originally took the proposed piece to the CCAC, we actually took it almost exactly as it was displayed there. And then they made, I made mention in my staff report that we made a slight modification to the text, so that is why you see it look different than what is being proposed on the site. So, we can go back to the original rendering. We will have to work with the applicant, though, because they had some concern because the original piece talks about staying on Highway Ten, ten minutes to Palm Drive exit, and they didn't want to confuse anybody with somebody thinking that wasn't the Palm Drive exit. So, we can talk about the semantics of the text, but yes, the font, we can make very similar.
Okay, I, no, I'm, the text as it appears here is fine. We're not talking about text, we're talking about the font.
We can make that work. We can make it work.
No, I wasn't saying stay on Ten to Palm, I wasn't talking about that. I'm just talking the same text that you have there.
Yes, we want to make it as historic, historically accurate as possible. We can absolutely work with Mark and his team to make that happen.
There's a motion, a second on the table. Mr. Griffith, Mr. Betts, there's, Mr. Don, Don, Mr. Schulte? Mr. Schulte? Mr. Schulte? Disrupting the meeting is not in the proper manner. Alright, now that Mr. Schulte's left the room, with that said, there's a motion, a second on the table. Mr. Griffith, Mr. Betts, you're back in the queue. Alright.
Call for the question, Mr. Mayor.
There is a motion, a second. Public hearing is closed. And if you have any other comments, you'll need to come talk to staff after the meeting. I apologize. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, item number seven is appointment to the planning commission to fill vacancy for unexpired term. Mr. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Councilmember Robert Griffith previously served on the planning commission. Upon his appointment to the city council to fill the vacancy created by former councilmembers of Allo's resignation, he vacated his seat on the planning commission. Former councilmembers of Allo originally appointed councilmember Griffith to the planning commission. With that being said, councilmember Griffith is the designated councilmember to make the appointment to replace, or to, to replace himself on the planning commission. My, that concludes my staff report. I turn it over to councilmember Griffith.
Mr. Griffith, do you have an appointment for the planning commission?
I do. I would like to appoint to the planning commission Augustine Aragon. I think he's very well-qualified. He is the director of economic development for C-VET, and he is a veteran, and I think he would make a great addition to the team.
There's a motion, a second. Anybody in the audience like to speak to this? I see none. Would any councilmembers like to speak? I see none. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Pye.
Mr. City Clerk, I like how you spread out everything and made it much easier to compare.
Thank you.
Item number eight is the end, year-end budget adjustments for the fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Acting Financial Director, Mr. Buckheim.
Yes, thank you. The attached budget adjustments are the result of the year-end review of the eighteen nineteen fiscal year. For the general fund, these adjustments consist of transfers to other funds, and these, to cover additional costs in those funds. They were unanticipated for such things as the Cabot's museum expansion and their increased utility costs, increased utility, increased costs for citywide landscaping and items like that, a law enforcement facility. These, I'm sorry, back to the general fund. The costs for these, these additional costs are actually covered by additional revenues. The revenues we received over, received over budget. For the law enforcement facility fund, there's, you know, additional costs for body cameras and the remodel, the remodeling of Building B. Those, these costs are also covered by revenues over budget. And the same for Measure A. We've cut costs or additional costs in Palm Drive entryway medium upgrades, and these costs are also covered by additional revenues over budget. And the same goes, we have additional contract services and abandoned vehicles, and we had, we received more revenue than anticipated. So, the staff recommends approval of these adjustments to the fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget.
Thank you for your staff report. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Alright, we'll close public comments, and we'll open to council. Mr. Betts?
Sorry, remodeling of Building B caught me by surprise, but it's, it's a line item for three thousand dollars? Is that what it is? How much was remodeling?
So, that actually is covering new equipment, such as computers within, within Building B.
So, it wasn't a very significant expense?
No.
Okay, alright. So, I heard Building B, and hadn't seen it in here when I looked at this before. So, basically, we've gone from, we were four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand ahead, but we found some things to spend that on that were determined as needed and necessary. And so, now we're gonna end up one-hundred-and-sixty, oh, you guys gotta get bigger type here. One-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand ahead after we've moved these expenses. That's who you're asking us to approve?
Yes, we are.
Alright, Mr. Gardner?
Looking at this and realizing, and sitting through the budget process last year from out there and watching it, I just wanted to say, I, in all my years in government service and working with budgets statewide and municipal-wise, I've rarely seen one that's come as close as we have on this. So, I think that bodes to the council that adopted and developed this budget before us up here. Did a great job that they did, and the staff that they did in, in, in budgeting and tracking revenue and making expenses. I, I've rarely seen one come in as, as close as we have with this, and we're very fortunate that we could be in the financial situation that we are, and I think that speaks very well of the staff and the council on that. So, I just wanted to commend everybody for that.
No one else in the queue? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve a staff recommendation.
There's a motion, a second. Mr. Gardner, are you back in the queue? Okay, no other further discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number nine is a placement of a three-million-dollar cap on emergency reserve funds. Mr. Buckheim?
Yes, in October twenty fifteen, city council adopted a resolution to place twenty-five percent of the city's annual cannabis tax revenue into the emergency reserve fund. And these funds could only be used in case of fiscal slash financial emergency, which is defined in the resolution as a condition that the city will be unable to pay its general fund, general obligations for a period of sixty days. According to our eighteen nineteen budget, sixty days of obligations would be about three million dollars. And also, due to the increase in, our increase in the cannabis tax revenues, the, doing the twenty-five percent set aside, will, it'll start to, we will have to move funds from the unrestricted general fund reserve into, to be able to make that twenty-five percent. So, basically, what we're doing is we will be, ended up taking funds from an unrestricted savings account and putting it into a restricted savings account, which then kind of, which then would limit the flexibility that the city would have to spend on future projects and, and programs that are not considered fiscal emergencies. So, we're requesting a, you know, the three-million-dollar cap. This cap, this three-million dollars should be reached in about two years, and if by any chance that the, the balance of the emergency reserve fund does go below three million dollars, the city will reinstate the twenty-five percent set aside to put in, to make it, get the balance back up to three million dollars. This cap does not put a cap on the actual revenues received. It just puts, it just puts a limit on how much is going to be set aside.
Do we have public comments on this item?
This, I'm Joe McKee, and this was originally why I was getting a comment. And I've actually written this down so that I can do it quickly enough. There, there are some things in the description that the staff has written that, that are at best quirky, as far as I'm concerned. First of all, this reserve does not come from the general fund. It comes directly from a revenue stream that has been set, set up by the city council in the same way that the citizens of the community have set up the public safety money. You're not taking from the general fund. It should be taken out before it even gets to the general fund. With just a two-page description that I've seen, we don't know what the current or future budget spending is for, whether it is maintained at present levels in line with inflation or is significantly increased. We don't know what projects or programs are involved in the calculation. The presentation doesn't deal with the fact that the marijuana tax could possibly disappear as businesses go out of business. You know, we're dealing with the fact now that there's a significant amount of supply in marijuana, and much of it is going out of state. If the federal government were to find that several of our grows were actually sending stuff out of state, they should be, could be shut down by the federal government. It doesn't deal with the effect of the economy itself. During the last downturn, our property tax went down fifty percent. The sales tax also went down significantly, let alone the utility user tax and everything else. We had a six-million-dollar budget deficit in two thousand thirteen. All of those are possibilities in the next five years. The whole point of putting this reserve together was not to have a minimum reserve of three million dollars, but to have enough that the city council and the staff would have enough time to have enough time to react rather than chopping everyone's salary and stopping programs dead in the water. Around ten months ago, the council basically had something that was similar to this that came forward. And during that time, we said we did not want the marijuana money to be used to offset excess spending in the general fund. That was something that was said. According to the table at the bottom of the page, we're actually spending three point four million dollars over that period of time, more than is coming in. Now, what you're gonna say is, well, if we take the excess money we have in this tax and move it over to there, we won't be excess spending. The problem is that will reduce the amount of money if something bad happens that you'll have to react to things. The point of this reserve was not to meet minimum numbers. The minimum number of three million dollars is ridiculous. We had five million dollars theoretically in the twelve thirteen budget. That all disappeared in one year. What we need to do is make sure that we have spending under control and that we're in a position that we build this reserve for the downturn that's gonna come up.
Anyone else like to speak to this item?
Steve Gibbene, resident here in Desert Hot Springs. I just see a chance, I agree a lot with, with the previous speaker, I see a chance to, to put us in jeopardy. I don't, I would oppose this idea because it seems like when times get rolling well, they, it just, the incentive is there to, to not, but this is the savings account. This is basically what, what you rely on in case of a, a bad period and, and heading into what the economy looks like. I would agree, this is, this is a bad idea. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to this item?
Janice Goff. My only comment on this is speaking to one of the cannabis experts, they told me that nationwide, there's a seventy percent failure rate on businesses in cannabis. That's an average. So, those are things you have to take into concept within putting this together because that money may not, that money could very easily dry up. No one knows. It's speculative right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Close public comments, start with Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I have to commend the previous council and councilmember Pye, who made the motion that the twenty-five percent set aside of cannabis tax revenue in a exceptional long-term reserve was brilliant, and it's, it's one of the things that will prove us, do us well in the future. That being said, it doesn't make an awful lot of sense to me to keep growing this fund bigger and bigger and bigger with the restrictions that are on it now. So, I, a three million dollar cap to me seems reasonable, especially if we look at sixty days of emergency funding, which is what I believe the previous council wanted is what, what the definition of in there is for the, for this extra set of reserves. It would perhaps make sense, and maybe Jeffrey, you can figure out if we, if it does, as our budget grows over the ensuing years, that three million dollars is not going to be sixty days. Eventually, it'll grow to fifty days, forty days, as our budget grows. So, would it make sense for us to put an escalator in that three million to be a, rather than a set three million dollars, is a percentage of the budget, whatever this three million is right now, is a, is a certain percentage of our, of our existing budget, make it a percentage as opposed to a flat dollar fee? That would be my question on that.
Yes, that is, there's something we, we can do. So, I mean, as the budget grows, as you can see, the, on the chart, it shows that, you know, that the actual, the both, all the columns, this is actual total of the actual savings we would kind of project. And so, if we want, and part of it would be some expenses growing, and we can put in kind of like a percentage, a type of percentage and say, you know, every year, see, okay, sixty days of, you know, sixty days of obligations, the marijuana reserve should be this much, and we can transfer that amount in. It wouldn't be as high as the twenty-five percent, but getting, right, but I'm saying for the three million for right now, until we get up to three million, we are, we are currently around one point four million after fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
Is there a reason you chose three million?
I chose three million based on the resolution from the original of sixty days, and three million's about.
So, that's where you got that figure?
Yes.
So, that, that three million is based on sixty days at our current budget?
Yes.
So, next year, five million dollar extra budget, we would increase that to say, I don't know, three hundred, three million one hundred thousand, something like that, to that, that extent. Okay. Because we do have our existing reserves. Our, our existing reserve right now is, if I remember correctly, is roughly ten?
Right now, existing reserve for the end of fiscal year eighteen nineteen, which are preliminary unaudited numbers, we are expecting to be about ten point four million.
Yeah, so, and those are our regular reserves?
Well, that, that's the total. So, the regular reserve would be a little over nine million.
Okay.
If you include.
So, that includes both the regular reserve and the marijuana tax emergency sixty-day reserve?
Yes, the ten point four includes both the unrestricted and the marijuana.
Nine, ten million dollars. So, okay, but the, the marijuana reserves is set aside, locked away, it's like the last thing we touch before, after we've used our existing reserves, correct?
It's, well, it will be, we can access that based on the council's wishes.
Yeah, but it takes a four-fifth majority, correct?
Right, four-fifths vote and basically, and it have to be considered a fiscal emergency.
But it's designed to be the last, the last reserves, as it were? Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, there's nothing like a financial crisis to sharpen your pencil, and nothing like a really bad financial crisis to say, hey, we're gonna take twenty-five percent of marijuana money and set it in a separate savings account. The point of that is, the context here was, the council, through thirteen budget meetings, after finding out we had a very severe budget crisis, put everything on a course to get the city to a position where it was, had recovered and in a position to start growing reserves. But all during that time, there was a couple of months where we didn't have sixty days worth of money to even make payroll. And so, the thought, this, you know, this, to me, as I remember, it was looked at as, you know, above and beyond what we were normally gonna save. So, we should be thinking in terms of two things here, one, a general fund reserve that we should have, and then, two, a, a extra reserve. Now, I can remember sitting at tables right over there when we were, it was announced that we had four, four million dollars left in reserve, and we had a huge budget problem, and the suggestion was that we spend all the money in one year, and then we'll figure out how we're gonna sort it out. And a whole bunch of commotions set in when the suggestion was made, no, I think you better take that four million you got and split it over two years and make some cuts now because we've got a problem. Well, the problem was so severe that there was a magical account to ten, that stuff getting, all the spending got dumped into and put as was a six point nine million surprise deficit. So, that was an extraordinary situation. So, now, you know, it's like, when there's a banking, when there's a financial crisis, the banks get really tight on lending until things come around again. It takes a little while for things to loosen up. So, you know, how cautious do you wanna be? Too much reserves, it's a bad thing because you're maybe missing some opportunity and things you could do with that money. So, anyhow, that said, that's the historical perspective that I see on this. Now, I'm having trouble like Councilman Gardner has about if being a fixed amount. And I would say a percentage of something would be better than a fixed amount. I mean, we, we do a CPI index on the marijuana tax, it automatically goes up anticipating that the budget's gonna grow and that inflation's gonna set in. I, you know, it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, let's put a savings rate on there as well. And figuring out how fast five million disappeared when we had, what was it, a fourteen or fifteen million dollar budget, how quick five millions in reserves disappeared, three million, at eighteen million or twenty million dollar budget doesn't seem adequate to me. I would say that, I would, I would go for a cap of five million, start capping it at five million, and which, you know, it's, right now, it's fifteen percent. If I take those numbers here, present budget divided by the three million, you got fifteen percent. So, if you were just gonna go with a straight percentage and accept staff's numbers of a three million dollar cap, well, that would be fifteen percent of the general fund budget would be an equivalent inflationary factor to put in, as councilmember Gardner was talking about. But I'd be much more comfortable with five million as the point that we would start capping that. And I think some of the new councilmembers could say, well, that might be a little bit too cautious. I think that'd be reasonable for them, that's a good balancing look, because we do wanna get things done, we do wanna do projects. But those of us that went through those meetings, and it was pretty darn miserable eighteen months, and so, if I'm erring on the other side, that would be why. But we are, you know, I would love to have an addition on my house and new car, new TV, whatever it is, and all the stuff in the world that we want. There's always unlimited wants, there's always limited resources, and then there's always ups and downs in financial times, and we gotta pay attention. So, we, the council had did a fantastic job getting ourselves out of that mess. We did it without borrowing. Staff has done a really good job keeping an eye on spending, balancing what the community needs. We got swimming pools that are open now, when before they were closed. Lot of stuff the community's asking for and getting, it makes it a nice place to live. Just gotta stay within our means. So, I'll wait and hear the rest of the comments, but I would be more in favor of five million and putting it as a percentage of the general fund balance, or at very least, doing it at fifteen percent if everybody's gonna go along with this proposal.
Mr. Griffith?
Yeah, I, Gary kinda, Mr. Gardner, already addressed mine, but I just wanna say, I think there needs to be something tied to any increases in the budget. In other words, if three million is sixty days' worth in two years, if that's not it, then we're gonna need to increase that. So, I think we should have some kind of mechanism to adjust that on a regular basis, whether it's annual or, or semi-annual or what.
Yeah, and I agree, there should be some escalator in there, whatever that percentage should be. So, I don't know who's the smartest person to figure that out, but it sounds like, Mr. Buckheim, you're gonna be, but if you wanna push that into the motion, I'm in favor of an escalator also.
What, what is the percentage of it, Jeffrey, right now?
So, right.
What is, what is three million? Have you got a calculator handy?
So, right now, so sixty days, so the three million, which would be, you know, sixty days is about sixteen to seventeen percent of the budget.
Seventeen percent. So, I would, if I may, Mr. Mayor, make a motion that says that we cap the marijuana reserves at seventeen percent of the annual budget, rather than, so, but just go with that.
Go twenty?
Does that make sense, Mr. Buckheim?
Could you go twenty, Gary?
Yeah, if that makes sense, I mean, we can do it, you know, at the end of every fiscal year, see, with the emergency reserve is at sixteen or seventeen percent of that year's budget and transit, and then set aside whatever else is needed.
Well, you said sixteen, so, I'll round it up to seventeen and, and, and go with that if, if the council is meaningful to that.
The motion is seventeen percent. Is there a second?
I'd like to see it at twenty.
All right, Mr. Betts, you have comments?
Yeah, I'd like to see it at twenty minimum, seeing how fast that money can disappear when times get tough.
Anybody amending their motion? I don't hear any alternative motions. Please vote.
Motion passes. Would councilmember Betts oppose?
Item number ten is an ordinance amending chapter three point one four four, purchasing of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, clarifying amending procurement procedures and amending chapter three point four five, public works projects, increasing competitive bidding at their threshold amounts in accordance with state law. This will be Deputy City Manager Luke Rainey.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. So, the purpose of this ordinance amendment is, that's before you, is to update language that was initially set back in two thousand and nine. Since two thousand and nine, there's been several changes to state code and regulations that have come into play, and also, spending authorities back in two thousand and nine no longer have the same power in the twenty nineteen economy. So, the staff report sectioned out the purchasing in, to address public works projects and also to address city purchases of services, supplies, and equipment. And to go into the details, I'm gonna have our city attorney, Jennifer Mizrahi, go over some points of the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, a quick little housekeeping, earlier during the meeting, something was handed out to you, and the reason why is because I failed to include it as an exhibit to the resolution located on your package page seventy-five. That is the resolution, that the, the item that was handed out to you is the resolution that staff is proposing be repealed, and instead, what we're, what we'd like to do is codify all of the purchasing policies and procedures in our code. It needs to be codified by state law and not in a resolution, so we, we do need to do it via ordinance. So, basically, the ordinance that you have before you does several things. It increases the public works bidding thresholds to the amounts that are allowed pursuant to state law. Those amounts are detailed in your, in the ordinance and in the staff report, but more so than that, it also kind of harmonizes, if you will, and, and creates new procedures and uses a lot of old procedures from the two thousand and nine resolution, and sets forth procedures specifically for purchases, supplies, equipment, and professional services. Everything's kind of lumped together in one. And the main portions of some of the changes that you will see, I'm going to kind of read out, they're actually located on page fifty-six of your staff report. But some of the changes is that the ordinance proposes that the city manager authority to purchase supplies and equipment, this also includes agreements, it's part of the definition in the ordinance, from thirty thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars. And of course, anything in excess of fifty thousand would have to come before the city council, you know, for, for approval. In addition, it allows piggybacking, which is a way to streamline formal bidding processes. It also allows the city manager to make emergency purchases for emergency situations. It also provides a, a, a change order system whereby if we do enter into a contract, let's say, an amount not to exceed fifty thousand, and there was a change order for thirty percent of the original contract amount, provides the city manager authority to actually do those kinds of change orders. We found that at least, that this would be a, a way to harmonize the process, get it all codified into an ordinance, and in reviewing all this with staff, hopefully, it streamlines a lot of the processes. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and basically, if you do adopt the ordinance, you would be doing two things. You would adopt the ordinance, and then, in addition, you would repeal the two thousand and nine resolution, which would take effect at the date of, the effective date of the ordinance.
Anybody in the audience like to speak to this? Close public comments? Councilmember comments, Mr. Betts?
Thank you. So, what was this document? We got resolution number two thousand nine zero one six. What was, why did we get handed this?
That's, that's the resolution to be repealed, and so, the reason why you, you're getting that is because I forgot to include it as an exhibit to the resolution which would repeal that resolution on page seventy-five of your staff report.
So, it's germane to our discussion tonight?
Yes, it, it, it is, but I went ahead and I kind of vetted it through the staff report, et cetera, I merely forgot to attach it.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we need to continue this item based on the fact that information germane to the discussion wasn't made available to the public seventy-two hours in advance with the posting of the notice for the agenda, and that the council has been handed this at a time when we've been conducting all kinds of other business, and we've got a document here that we were supposed to have read. And so, I just, you know, we, we need to get this right as far as the public notice goes.
There's a motion on the table. There's a motion to continue. Is there a second?
Can we get on this?
No call. No second. Motion fails.
I didn't get to punch in the motion on the screen.
Still looking for a verbal second. There was no verbal second, so.
All right.
It'll be recorded on the, on the recording in a minute.
So, all right, well, I'll continue then. Now, the, reading through the strike throughs, and what we were provided ahead of the meeting, it shows that we had a system whereby, a structure with a purchasing agent, that we use as a purchasing agent. And this strikes that. Now, I don't know if we've ever been using a purchasing agent because I've been pushing for that since I've been up here because purchasing agent is a much better at providing accounting controls. You get better controls of centralized purchasing. You also get a skill set that is matched to the specific task of purchasing. And, you know, purchasing does purchasing, shipping does shipping. Everybody matches up to what their particular job function is. General managers do general management. You get better organizational flow and you get less duplication of effort and a more efficient system. That's the case for having a purchasing agent. We aren't there. This formally strikes it, so it just takes us further away from what I would like to see. I got some other concerns. And this one is, it eliminates the publishing of notices in newspapers of record, which means the legal notices. Now, I don't know, you know, who reads those and, you know, it's an expense, but that is definitely loosening up the public notice. I think it does it in favor of just finding three suitors, three people to bid on something. As long as you find three people, I don't know what other, and it eliminates posting the bids in multiple places around the city. So I'm of a favor of more public notice on bidding and not less, and this takes us the other direction. It did eliminate the pre-approved bidders list, which is a great change. That was a horrible thing to have in place, a pre-approved bidders list, in case you know what that is. You have a list of people that are approved to bid on stuff. Somebody comes along and says, hi, I'd like to bid on that. It could be the best person in the world. City says, sorry, we're not taking your bid, you're not on the list, and you deny yourself that benefit. On page sixty-one, item D near the bottom of the page, rejection of bids, and it reads, "In its discretion, the city council may reject any and all bids presented, and it may re-advertise for bids pursuant to procedure described in the section." What that means is if something comes up here and looks like all of them are way too much, and we say, hey, wanna put this back out to bid, that's been a common practice, we've done it a few times here. This ordinance will change that. It strikes the ability of this council to put something back out to bid, as I read through the strike throughs. Now, if there's somewhere in there that that language has been stricken out and then put back in somewhere else for another change, great, but if it, if it eliminates the council's ability to reject bids, I mean, every board and commission I've been on has had stuff come in down at Sunline and, you know, everybody's sitting there in the finance committee and then at the, the main board saying, no, 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 we, we don't like what's come in here, we'll put this back out again, there's something wrong, we do this again. So I saw this strike out. If somebody tells me it's been put back in somewhere else, great. Packet page sixty-three, three-point-four-four, point-one-one-zero, must be budgeted. Stricken is a provision that purchases must be budgeted, budgeted. And the language reads now, provided that the subject purchase has been authorized by an approved city council budget. That means that we set the budget as we did many years ago. They got us a fine-tuned budget that worked. And then within that budget framework, now the city manager can go ahead and spend. But if it's not budgeted, what the prior thing said, if it's not budgeted, the city has to come for that authorization. So if he has to go buy something and it's not a budgeted item, he's gotta check with us. If it is a budgeted item, go ahead, run, run ahead. We set the master plan, he manages as we go through. So that provision is stricken, and I don't like that. Professional and consulting contracts over thirty thousand must be approved by the council. So if you're bringing in consultants over thirty thousand, or presumably fifty thousand, it's the new limits that are being talked about, that would be stricken. So any consulting that wants to be hired, and we end up with, with, you know, the consultants are, you know, who knows who they are, and we don't have any, the council gives up, relinquishes all control over that. And, you know, finally, we certainly don't have any problem with the existing city manager. He's doing a great job. Somebody we all recognize is helping guide the city further and faster than, you know, we've wanted to go in a long time. But he's not gonna be here forever. And these are procedures that prevent situations like we had before with a surprise that threw this town into a tizzy. And I think the council's primary budget function, function, one of its primary functions is budgeting, and this gives up way too much control. I could never vote for this item. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Anybody else in the queue undertaking a motion?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second? Motion fails. Is there another motion?
I would move that we approve the proposed resolution as presented in the staff packet.
Like, I've heard.
Is there a second? Any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to have an amended motion that we approve the staff recommendation. However, keeping in the council discretion to reject all bids presented and retaining the council right to re-author, or re-advertise bids, go back out again for bid.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can't find it right now, but I do believe that that is included. It was staff's intent actually to include the fact that the city council can in fact reject bids. I believe it's in certain code sections. I can't find it right now. So just to let you know, that's what staff was, or at least myself, that's what I was thinking.
The amended motion fails. The current motion's on the table. Approve staff recommendation. Gardner, fine. Other discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes. Would Councilmember Betts oppose? This is a first reading of an ordinance amending chapter three-point-four-four, purchasing of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, clarifying and amending procurement procedures and amending chapter three-point-four-five, public works projects, increasing competitive bidding threshold amounts in accordance with state law. The ordinance will return on September seventeenth for second reading and adoption.
Thank you very much. Item number eleven is two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty reimbursement agreement with Palm Springs Unified School District for School Resource Officer SRO Services at Desert Hot Springs High School. Our police chief, Jim Henson.
Mr. Mayor, could we forego the staff report and go straight to a vote on this one? I think it's-
Is there anything important in there that's different than what you-
No, this is annual.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
And just real quick, I did forget to announce in the general comments that this Friday is community night for the Desert Hot Springs High School football game. I believe the game starts at seven. We ask that the community comes out. There'll be a flyer on my Facebook. If anybody wants to get more details, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Our last item tonight is a designation of voting delegate and alternates for the two thousand nineteen League of Cities Annual Conference in Long Beach, California. I will not be, I am the delegate. Mr. Betts is the alternate. I will not be attending. I know Mr. Betts will be attending, so he'll be the voting delegate. Is there anybody else attending? Miss Pye, were you attending? As mayor puts him, you would be the, the alternate, if that's okay with you?
Aye.
All right. That's my, is that okay, Mr. Seriano? Did you, did you wanna do a full report? I just walked right over you on that one.
No, it's fine.
Motion is to appoint Mr. Betts as the voting delegate with the, with two, actually, do we need two alternates or does it-
No, it's up to two.
Mr. Gardner, are you attending? So we'll have two alternates just in case, so these two get hit by a bus. You'll be there. All right. So the, the voting delegate would be Mr. Betts, the two alternates would be Miss Pye and Mr. Gardner. Please, oh, I'm sorry. Does anybody like to speak in the audience? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Our future items can be discussed with city manager. At the beginning of the meeting, we have public comments. Did anybody in the audience, the last two members, want to speak in public comments if you did not speak at the beginning of the meeting? Our next city